22 PM in a quorum, the board is present. The regular meeting of the State Board is reconvened. May I please have a motion to... Ms. Evans, are there individuals who wish to address the board during today's meeting?
Yes, there are people who have registered to provide public comment today, and I will review the rules. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes to address the board, and I will keep track of time. We will be strictly following the time limit so that everyone has an opportunity to speak. It is the practice of the board not to respond to comments during the public participation portion of the meeting. We will maintain an atmosphere of respect for all people. Any person disrespecting anyone by name or otherwise will be asked to cease. Public participation will occur in person and virtually. We will begin with the persons that are physically in the room with us today, and then move to those in the queue online. In the room today, first we'll have Kathy Lester. You guys can come to the table at the same time, that's fine. Whenever you're ready, you may begin your three minutes.
Great, thank you. Good afternoon. My name's Kathy Lester, and I'm here today representing the Michigan Association of School Librarians. My comments are in response to the presentation on school library book selection and book reconsideration given at the November State Board of Ed meeting. I want to thank the Library of Michigan, Dr. Chapman, and Dr. Edwards for their presentation. Thank you also to Dr. Rice for his ending comments. Dr. Chapman and Dr. Edwards spoke about the school library as a gateway of opportunity, and how school libraries support the joy in learning. We thank them for those excellent comments. We agree that certified school librarians are the literacy leaders in their schools. While the conversation was focused on books and reading, school librarians are leaders in all forms of literacy: digital literacy, information literacy, media literacy, which are essential for today's students. School librarians serve the entire school community, including students, teachers, administrators, and caregivers. The American Association of School Librarians' definition of an effective school library includes staffing by a state-certified school librarian. Without the staffing, you do not have an effective school library. School librarians' preparation programs include education on school library policies and procedures, collection development, intellectual freedom, and ethics, among other things. School librarians are able to work with their administrators and community to develop policies that follow best practices. The Michigan Department of Ed published a memo on best practices of school library collections in April of 2023. This memorandum was not mentioned in last month's presentation, but it is a really good overview of good school library collection reconsideration policies. I brought copies today, I'm going to pass these around, I hope. The purpose of school library collection policies is to ensure that students have access to a wide range of materials that meet their academic and personal needs. It is important to point out that school library collection development policies should be separate from curriculum material selection policies. Curriculum material selection policies are designed for selecting required materials for specific classes. School libraries support independent reading and learning for enrichment. Students with the support of their parents have the choice to check out or not check out materials. The Michigan Association of School Librarians is happy to answer questions on this topic if you do have them.
Gwen?
Thank you.
And then Gwen Marchesno?
Marchesano.
Marchesano, very good. Sorry about that. And whenever you're ready to begin.
All right. Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. I am Gwen Marchesano. I'm from Manistee, Michigan, and I'm also representing Michigan Association of School Librarians. My comments are in response to remarks and questions shared during the presentation on school library board selection and book reconsideration given at the November 14th State Board of Education meeting. My response will address parental rights, the reconsideration of materials processed, and the censorship of materials in Michigan schools. School librarians have always supported parents' rights to help their students choose materials. If parents have a question about materials that their student has checked out, they can speak with the school librarian to express their concern. The school librarian can work with the student and the parent to select alternate materials. This is a one-step process and involves open communication and respect between the school librarian and the parent. In cases where this solution isn't acceptable, a parent can fill out a reconsideration form following the school board-approved policy. Best practices dictate that a reconsideration committee read the entire book and meet to make a determination to retain the book, remove the book, move the book to a different level, or restrict access in some method. During the reconsideration process, the material remains available to the community. At the last board meeting, Mr. Bullock asked about book removals in Michigan schools. While no cases have gone to court decisions, there have been book removals and restrictions in several districts across the state. Penn America has reports detailing this, for instances that are reported or made public in newspapers. From communication with school librarians and community members, we know that there are other titles that have been removed from shelves in Michigan schools that have not been reported. In addition, we know of instances where administrators are not allowing books to be purchased for fear of challenges, which is another form of censorship. Thank you for your time and your interest in this issue.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We will now move to those online.
...has reports detailing this.
Hello caller, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Hello. Can you please state your name and where you're calling from, and then you may begin your three minutes of public comment.
Sure. My name is Napur Huria, and I'm calling from East Lansing.
Thank you. Go ahead and begin.
All right. Hello, members of the Michigan State Board of Education. My name is Napur Huria, and I'm a graduating junior at Michigan State University and a member of the Sexual Education Advisory Committee for Plymouth Canton Community Schools. I'm also a youth member of the Michigan Organization on Adolescent Sexual Health, also known as MoASH, and I thank you for the opportunity to share my thoughts today regarding updating our health education standards specifically to include content for menstrual health in Michigan schools. I personally never thought that I would be so public about my experiences with menstruation, but opening up this conversation allowed me to work closely with the Michigan State University Administration to implement over 200 free menstrual product dispensers across campus. The feedback made it clear that this initiative was necessary. Students were uninformed about their menstrual hygiene and felt that their menstrual experiences were to kept hidden. As we all know, education is the key to empowerment, and it's essential that we prioritize the revision and enhancement of our menstrual health standards. The health standards have not been updated since 2007, and without updating and passing them, school districts have the option to not include them in the curriculum. Firstly, addressing menstruation openly in our classrooms helps to de-stigmatize this natural bodily function. The silence around menstruation perpetuates shame and misinformation, and by incorporating accurate and developmentally appropriate information into our curriculum for all students regardless of if they menstruate, we promote compassion, respect, and an atmosphere where students feel comfortable discussing and understanding this aspect of health. As an aspiring physician, I must also point out that the lack of comprehensive menstrual health education can have long-term public health consequences. When students are uninformed about menstruation, they may face challenges in managing their own well-being, potentially leading to missed school days and compromised academic performance. Poor hygiene can lead to an increased risk of developing illnesses, and it scares me that students cannot often distinguish between a normal menstrual experience and an abnormal one. Without the right education, how will they know when to reach out for medical help? Updating our health education standards to explicitly include menstruation goes beyond the realm of anatomy and reproduction. I grew up in Michigan schools, starting with preschool to graduating high school and now about to graduate from Michigan State, and I've made some of my fondest memories here. I'm still in touch with teachers from elementary school. Mrs. Lester, if you can hear me, you were my school librarian, still best friends with classmates from third grade, and none of that would have been possible without the support that I know that Michigan schools provide. I love my state, and I'm proud of our contribution to menstrual equity so far, and I'm beyond grateful for the opportunity to come full circle and contribute to aspects of my education that I wished I had back then.
Thank you.
I urge you to update the health...
We appreciate your participation. Thank you.
Hello?
Hello caller, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Thank you. If you'll please state your name and where you're calling from, and then you can begin your three minutes of public comment.
Yeah, Sheila from McComb. President of the Board, you stated in your comments two board meetings ago when the HHS was giving their presentation on vaccines and how great they are. You had stated that there are hundreds of adults at the schools who serve as breadwinners, and that the children should be subjected to masking and getting a shot to protect the "older" quote-unquote people. This thought process is utterly insane and is not backed by any science whatsoever. If you want to be protected, you get the shot, you wear the mask, you stay home, not the children. The children are and were harmed enough by the ridiculous measures that were instituted in 2020. They were brought on and were only backed up by political science. The children have always been the ones who have the most robust immune system. It surprises me that people can't do the simple research it takes to see that, one, the shots, because they're simply not really vaccines, don't stop the actual spread of the virus of COVID-19, and have a higher likelihood to vaccine-injure a child with myocarditis and heart inflammation and other issues than to stop them from actually getting COVID, which is basically a cold for them right now and was back then as well. Add to that that the President of the United States, the CDC Director, and almost all the doctors have now said that the shots do basically nothing to slow the spread, yet you keep pushing it. And then, too, you have not researched the fact that masks do nothing to slow the spread of aerosolized viruses such as COVID. The particle size of the COVID virus is smaller than the K95 respirators, which are not masks, they're respirators. I mean, Anthony Fauci said in 2020 they don't stop the spread. And you allow members of your board to discriminate and ridicule people for making a sound decision for themselves to not take an experimental shot, which has never been FDA-approved and has never stopped the spread of COVID, by calling them irresponsible. The majority of this board truly needs to reflect on themselves, and their discriminating nature of calling people irresponsible for not taking an experimental shot. The fact that this has never and continues to ignore the facts and studies that show there are and has been thousands of people harmed by these shots is utterly astounding. How come you haven't had or agreed to have people that can share the real data on masking and infectious disease? The people that actually deal with infectious disease and mitigation tactics...
Thank you so much. That's your three minutes.
Are called industrial hygienists. Have those people on.
Thank you.
They will make sure that you are educated.
Thank you, caller. Appreciate your phone call this afternoon. Mike, are there any other callers today who have pre-registered for public participation?
No, those are all the callers.
Thank you so much. That concludes public participation.
Thank you to all those of you who presented publicly, and to Ms. Lester, there is no greater thrill than a former student calling you out and remembering you fondly. How cool is that? That's a nice holiday gift, isn't it?
Yeah.
Board, we are at the approval of minutes of regular and committee the whole meeting of November 14th, 2023. May I please have a motion to approve these mittings? Approved by or moved by Mr. McMillan, seconded by Mr. Bullock. Do we have any discussion? Hearing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Bullock?
Yes.
Lifton?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
And Tilly?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next item on today's agenda is a presentation on Michigan's multi-tiered System of Supports Technical Assistance Center. This presentation will feature information on the professional learning provided by the Michigan MTSS TA Center to Michigan's educators to support the implementation of evidence-based practices within a multi-tiered System of Supports framework. We welcome our presenters, Dr. Suce Carnell, Chief Deputy Superintendent, Division of the Chief Deputy Superintendent, Dr. Kim St. Martin, Director of Michigan's Multi-Tiered System of Supports Technical Assistance Center, and Ms. Teri L. Rink, Director in the Office of Special Education. This is an informational presentation, no board action is required. Presenters, welcome.
Well, thank you, Dr. Rice, and good afternoon, Board members. It is a pleasure to be here, and thank you for the opportunity to share with you information about the multi-tiered System of Support, otherwise known as MTSS, and the ways in which Michigan's MTSS Technical Assistance Centers help teachers and leaders learn how to implement the MTSS framework. Joining me today are my colleagues, Dr. Kim St. Martin, Director of the Michigan MTSS Technical Assistance Center, which is a mouthful, and Ms. Teri Rink, Director of the Office of Special Education here in the department. So, we will begin today by briefly defining the MTSS framework, and then move to the purpose and scope of the support provided by the Michigan MTSS Technical Assistance Center, followed by examples of professional learning available to our teachers, our administrators, ISD district consultants, as they work to accelerate student and academic outcomes. And then lastly, you will hear about related data and resources associated with the Michigan MTSS Technical Assistance Center. And now I will hand it over to Dr. Kim St. Martin.
Well, good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for having us. So, the first portion of our presentation is going to define what an MTSS framework is. And so, the pinwheel graphic that you see on this slide is the visual that we at Michigan Department of Education and the MTSS Technical Assistance Center use to describe what MTSS entails. Each of those petals of the pinwheel are essential components that I'm going to further describe in subsequent slides. So, we'll begin by defining what a multi-tiered System of Support is. MTSS is a comprehensive framework, and it is comprised of research-based strategies that are designed to meet the individual needs and the assets of the whole child at all achievement levels. We're focused on their academic health, their integration of mental health supports, physical health. MTSS is intended to support all students, including students with disabilities. There are five essential components for an MTSS framework, and these five essential components are the things that we at Michigan Department of Education and the My MTSS TA Center work with districts and schools to be able to put in place when they're implementing MTSS. Those five essential components include things like tier-based leadership, excuse me, team-based leadership, a tiered delivery system, so increasing the intervention, the intensity of the intervention supports across tiers one through three, the selection and the implementation of instruction, intervention, and supports, a comprehensive screening and assessment system, and last but certainly not least, continuous database decision-making. Each of those five essential components that I just described in the last slide and that you saw in that pinwheel graphic are further defined in this resource that my colleagues at Michigan Department of Education and the My MTSS Technical Assistance Center designed. It is called the MDE, MTSS Practice Profile, and it takes each of those five essential components, and it further operationalizes them to help districts and schools understand what each of those five things looks like in practice. It's important to know that MTSS is only a framework, and that framework is only as good as the evidence-based practices, the curriculum resources, and the assessments that are within the framework. We use the two S's of MTSS stand for Systems of Support, and so when we talk about the Systems of Support, those Systems of Support are for students, teachers, and staff. We're helping students receive the assistance that they need in the classroom settings and so that we can accelerate their outcomes. We're helping teachers and staff who need to use the evidence-based practices and the assessments, and we're helping teachers and staff to be able to use the processes and procedures to flexibly meet the needs of all their learners in the school setting. MTSS is reflected in both state and federal legislation. This slide represents areas of our state aid where MTSS is referenced. It's also included in the Read by Grade Three legislation. MTSS is also reflected in federal law in the Every Student Succeeds Act. So, the first section of our presentation focused on what MTSS is. And now I'm going to turn it over to my colleague, Teri Rink, who's going to give you a little bit of history about the My MTSS Technical Assistance Center.
Thank you, Dr. Martin. Thank you, too, for giving us an opportunity to share with you about the successes of the MTSS TA Center. Back in 2000, when Jackie Thompson was the State Director of Special Education, there was information coming from the federal government regarding response to intervention. And so, Jackie made the decision to use some IDEA, Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, funding to put into a model demonstration that Dr. Steve Goodman was leading, and that work evolved into what was known at that time as MyBlissey, Michigan's Integrated Behavior and Learning Supports Initiative. Dr. Goodman was the director of that work for about 20 years, and during that time, he was able to secure numerous grants, some of which came from the Department of Education in Washington, DC, as well as some of the additional state funding that Kim has referenced. MyBlissey gained a lot of state support, national recognition, international attention. It is a model for the effective implementation of tiered supports and intervention for all learners. And in 2018, as a result of a special education task force that was led at that time by Lieutenant Governor Calley, $1.6 billion of funding was provided to the Department of Education to further support the work of MyBlissey in working with intermediate school districts and districts in support of behaviors largely as a way of reducing the risk of seclusion and restraint, which was his priority at that time. When the department received those funds, they leveraged the resource differently, and they rebranded it. So, now we know MyBlissey as the MTSS Technical Assistance Center, and it is the type of support that department provides directly to districts, where we can say that because of this work, we're impacting teacher practices that are helping to lead to improved outcomes directly related to students and classrooms across the state.
So, let me talk a little bit about the types of supports that we provide as the Technical Assistance Center for MTSS. We provide a combination of in-person professional learning, virtual professional learning, also on-demand supports as well. I've included three examples of the types of professional learning that we provide. We assist teachers and leaders in understanding and using evidence-based reading and writing practices, and this includes the language essentials for teachers of reading and spelling or letters. We actually facilitate professional learning for partnership districts in letters and for comprehensive state literacy development grantees in the areas of letters as well. We also provide professional learning in helping teachers and leaders understand how to implement social-emotional behavior supports in the classroom and other common areas of the school, like the playground and hallways. And last but certainly not least, the third example I'm providing is we provide professional learning and implementation supports in how to intensify intervention instruction for students with disabilities and students who are at risk of learning difficulties. We also provide more than just professional learning. Professional learning certainly lays the foundation, however, we know that we have to support people in using what they were taught in professional learning. So, we include some additional supports that are referred to as communities of practice or power hours, where we have teachers and leaders who attended professional learning. They come and work with the lead facilitator of that training session, and they talk about how they can implement the strategies and things that they learned using the curriculum resources and assessments that are available within their school settings. We do that for letters. We call it the Letters Power Hour. We also have a community of practice for early childhood leadership teams as they are working to implement behavior supports in preschool settings. We also have a community of practice for teachers who are working to implement behavior supports in their classrooms. And for our intermediate school districts who are coordinating efforts of MTSS, we have a quarterly community of practice for ISD MTSS coordinators to work with them in their scale-up efforts. We include all of our professional learning materials and several other things on our Technical Assistance Center's website. The third and final section of our presentation will talk about some of our data and some additional resources that we provide. You see on this slide, we have two sets of data, and this is data that looks at our reach in terms of the number of educators, leaders, ISD staff that we're reaching across the state of Michigan. This represents our reach for last school year. And on the left-hand side, you see the state of Michigan, areas shaded in gray, sorry, in green represent district staff and public school academy staff who attended MTSS professional learning. On the left-hand side, 63% of districts across the state of Michigan have had staff attend professional learning. Approximately 24% of public school academy teachers and leaders have attended the professional learning. On the right-hand side, you see the same type of graph, but this time it's looking at our reach across ISD consultants and staff. And so, we have reached approximately 96% of ISDs across the state of Michigan. The next slide just quantifies the type of the number of people who've attended professional learning, and this is synchronous professional learning. So, this is live professional learning that we've either provided virtually or in person. In last school year, our professional learning reached over 11,524 educators. Most recently, we had our My MTSS Annual Conference. It's one of our largest events. It was November 28th and 29th at the Lansing Center, and I'm pleased to say it was the highest attendance that we had, and we actually sold out. Two of the most popular sessions included Dr. Whedon's session on how to implement systems change for sustained literacy transformation. The second most popular session was using database decision-making applied to mathematics. Next year, we're going to work to find a venue that would be able to hold more than 600 people. This final part of the presentation, we're outlining some of the additional MTSS resources and supports that we provide. From a literacy lens, we provide MTSS expertise for bill analyses, we provide assistance in developing state guidance, we provide support in MTSS literacy fidelity assessments, and we assist the U.S. Department of Education in writing some of their guidance as well. This slide is focused on our supports from a social-emotional behavior perspective. So, we, too, provide support in MTSS-related bill analyses, state and federal guidance documents as well. On the horizon, we are looking to expand the MTSS supports to the area of mathematics. So, our future goal is to have internal My MTSS TA Center staff develop and deliver professional learning that supports applying those five essential components to mathematics, and we're going to do this in collaboration with our state math leaders and our national researchers who specialize in tiered delivery systems for math.
We thank you for your attention.
We thank you for your attention, and now I will turn it back over to Dr. Rice.
Thank you very much, Dr. Cornell, Dr. St. Martin, Ms. Rink. Good to have you all here. Board members, what questions and comments do you have for MTSS presenters? Ms. Lipton.
Thank you. Thank you for that presentation. I really appreciate it. One of the questions I have is how do schools, ISDs, teachers, how are they best able to access these supports? In other words, is the department coming and sort of telling them, "You need our help"? Or is it more like, "We recognize maybe we need some additional support. Let us go to the website or call the..." I mean, did they call the department? Like practically speaking, how is the access happening?
Okay, so it's a combination of factors. Because MTSS appears in so many sections of state aid, we do have various consultants who get questions about MTSS. We, my staff at the MyMTSS Technical Assistance Center, we work very closely in collaboration with the department. We advertise our professional learning and services across ISDs and districts. We have thousands of people on our mailing list. We even have run focus groups with ISD consultants. We've included opportunities to speak to teachers and leaders at several of our conferences to understand what their needs are related to professional learning and understanding how to implement a multi-tiered system of support framework. So it's a combination of internal MDE collaboration and communication along with MyTA Center and our ISD colleagues as well.
And I'll give another example. For partnership districts, I reached out to Dr. St. Martin and said, "You know, we have this comprehensive literacy grant. I want you to work with the partnership districts to help them feather out the support with that grant, Tier 1, Tier 2, and Tier 3."
Okay, so for a district that's, you know, maybe more in distress because there's a partnership agreement, there might be a little bit more sort of outreach from the department. But just because we have so many districts and so many ISDs, it may be filtered through consultants or through some of these professional development seminars or what have you. I mean, this is just, is a parent? Or in other words, who of the general user makeup is able to access the supports? What's sort of the chain of command?
So in relationship to the partnership district example, we initiate initial communication with central office, building administrators, and seek out what their priorities and needs are and how we can be assistance to MTSS. We do have teachers that reach out and see the professional learning. We actually are working with Dr. Noel Kelty, who is creating a series of professional learning sessions specifically for family partnerships based on Michigan's family, the My Family Strategy Framework. And so it comes in a variety of forms. I have had parents who have reached out and inquiring about professional learning, and we also work with Michigan Alliance for Families. And actually, just next week, are going to be hosting a professional learning session that's talking about family engagement and accelerating literacy outcomes. So we collaborate pretty widely across a lot of our partnerships.
I know in this current budget, the legislature appropriated dollars for like regional literacy centers. I think so that's probably an area, too, where you might deploy some of these resources, perhaps. I think there was an appropriation for regional literacy hubs.
Literacy hubs, yes.
Yes, would this be an area?
It could be. When I think about MTSS, I think about, there used to be a commercial BASF. And it says, "We don't make things, we make things better." And so that's MTSS. They don't make things. They don't make curriculum or lesson, curriculum, I guess I should say, or programs. They make programs better. So let's take letters, for example. We will train people on letters and say, you know, "Here's what you do to reach instruction." But once you have the letters training, there's another component about how do you take your classroom lessons and make them better?
Yeah, it's always a challenge, you know, in a local control state where you have to respect the districts and their ability to do things. And yet, there's also this desire to want to just sort of, you know, get everyone this great information. So it is a little bit of a little tension, so thank you for that. I just had one other, I think maybe it's just a typo or what have you, but on slide number 16, when you talk about the reach across the state, the left slide, you're looking at 55 ISDs, and on the right slide, 54 ISDs. Was there one that didn't?
Let me explain that. So the, on the left-hand side, the districts that are shaded in green and public school academy teachers, the geographical locations for those districts and public school academies makes up approximately 98% of the ISDs regions.
Oh, you were matching them up to the ISDs?
You got it, yes. Because we do like to, because we have a collaboration with ISDs, we always want to kind of directly tie ISD region support down to district and school-level participation.
Let me ask you this. So is the, does the system work better when there's a collaboration from the MTSS to the ISD and then from the ISD to their districts? Because it seems like the ISDs would be a little bit closer to the local districts in sort of knowing what's going on in their LEAs as opposed to the department. I mean, I know that it can work in a number of ways. But just in your opinion, do you think that the relationship or the information flows better when you've got an ISD that's sort of a willing and energized partner?
Always. Those that are closer to the local district can provide some of the best information. But there are times when teachers themselves want to be a part of a session and to see how, what they can do in their classroom, how they can provide support at a tiered level for a particular program that they're using.
Okay, moving to the school.
Yes, yes.
Let's expand on what Dr. Cornell said. Some of the professional learning that we provide to, with ISDs is we provide trainer support sessions. So we have ISD consultants that want to learn how to support teachers in the use of evidence-based reading practices, for example, within an MTSS framework or social-emotional behavior supports. So they come to professional learning facilitator sessions where they, we've developed the professional learning materials. We work with their consultants to build their capacity in being able to deliver the professional learning. And it's a better way to go to scale because our ISD colleagues understand the context in which the districts and schools are situated. And so we work with them pretty closely to make sure that their consultants and staff have what they need to be able to provide MTSS-related professional learning.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Lipton. Other board members? Other reflection? Looking, 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 can't give it away. Talk to us a little bit about tiered system of supports relative to academics and then relative to behavior. Is there a tiering associated with each, and if so, how does that work?
So when we say a tiered system of support, it's, we talk about tiers 1 through 3. We integrate the supports for academics and social-emotional behavior, meaning that at a Tier 1 level, that's for all students and including students with disabilities. And we want to make sure that we have classroom environments that are safe, predictable, engaging. We want to make sure that the instruction is aligned with what has been proven through the research to work to be able to prevent difficulties and to be able to support their needs. Some students need Tier 2 supports. They need the intervention supports. And we're going to match the need based on the student. For example, from a social-emotional behavior perspective, there may be things that are preventing a student from feeling successful in the classroom setting. We may have to provide some behavioral intervention. And sometimes that, the student may need behavioral intervention because they may be trying to escape or avoid an instruction in an area that they just don't feel confident in being able to demonstrate. So that's a really good reason why we would want to integrate the intervention supports. Tier 3 is for the most significant persistent challenges. This should be the fewest number of students. And so that would cause us to look at really individualizing the intervention supports, whether it's academic-driven or focused on behavioral needs.
Thank you very much. What if I need intervention in only one of the two areas?
Yep, so we actually help our schools, look, and districts look at data. And we have academic data and behavioral, social-emotional behavioral data. So the data would drive the need. And we do have examples where student screening, universal screening data demonstrates a need, but there isn't another issue going on. So we work with schools and districts to create those processes or procedures. That was when I talked about what the system of supports means. We work with them in creating those processes or procedures for how to ensure kids can access the intervention that they need if it is academic, if the catalyst is because of academics, or if it has to do with social-emotional behavioral needs.
Thank you very much. That was really helpful. Board members, any other questions or comments? Ms. Lipton.
I just have one other thought. We heard the presentation earlier today from the Student Advisory Committee where they talked about the creation of these safe spaces. Is that something that M...
MTSS.
MTSS would conceivably incorporate into your own philosophy and program? I just thought that was really interesting. And is that something that you would incorporate or do incorporate?
So when we think about creating safe, predictable, engaging environments, a safe place, a safe space would be a safe environment in which students can feel included, they can be able to express what they're needing. So that would be something that when we work with schools on implementing positive behavioral intervention supports, we talk about how to create an environment school-wide that would allow kids to be able to interact positively with their peers, with adults. It would be able to be proactive, positive experiences. So yes, that would very much fit into a multi-tiered system of support framework. You're welcome.
Thank you very much. Presenters, happy holidays. Well, we are going to juggle our agenda just a little bit, given that our next presentation, many of our presenters for our next presentation are not available. So we're going to skip to the report of the Teachers of the Year, if we could. Ms. Candace Jackson, the current Michigan Teacher of the Year is a 3rd grade teacher at Mann Learning Community in Detroit Public Schools Community District. Ms. Jackson is joined by Ms. Bridget Sova, the Region 4 Regional Teacher of the Year. She's a science and math teacher at HH Dow High School in Midland Public Schools. We welcome Ms. Jackson and Ms. Sova to present their report. This is an informational presentation, but remember, they are teachers. They may test you. Teachers of the Year, welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You should be good, Jen.
Okay, I see it.
You see it?
Okay, there it is.
Okay, good.
There we go.
There it is, okay. Thank you.
Thought you were going to have to go a cappella, Teachers of the Year.
Hey, it wouldn't be the first time, right? You're good at that.
No, she isn't our friend right now.
There it is.
Blue screen.
You want to unplug and plug it back in?
Ah, the blue screen death. That's my husband actually refers to it. Oh, there it is.
Thank you. No breathing.
Well, that is fine.
Well, thank you for this opportunity to join you today. Presenting to the State Board of Education is one of the highlights of receiving the Award of Regional Teacher of the Year, so I'm excited to be here and have this time with you. These pictures show how I happen to divide my time. In the upper left-hand corner, you'll see a picture of my classroom. It's my science class. And I work with students with disabilities, and I have about 5 to 15 students in each one of my classes. I've been teaching for 32 years, and all of which have been in working with students with special needs, and I've loved every year. In the top middle picture there, you'll see, that's a snapshot of some of my students from summer school. For the past 10 years, I've either taught summer school, worked with MSU as a teacher consultant for the summer internship that they offered in Midland. In addition to that, I've also worked for the state of Michigan for the past 25 years in the Assessment and Accountability Department, mainly focusing on the MyAccess assessment. In the upper right-hand corner, you'll see a picture of Candace and I along with the other Regional Teachers of the Year. We were at CMU, and we were presenting to the Teacher Candidate Conference. And there were 160 teachers, and it was an awesome experience. In the lower left-hand corner is my family. I have three children, and they're there with either their spouses or significant others. And all three of my kids picked a partner from out of state. So unfortunately, my son and my daughter-in-law live in Texas, in Irving, Texas. They're going to school, Parker University, and they're going to be chiropractors. And my daughter graduated from Michigan State. She's in, works for the University of Utah. And she lives in Sellick City with her husband. And my youngest is at CMU. She's studying nonprofit administration. My husband and I are on the right, and we are currently renovating and opening a planned ice cream store in Sanford, Michigan. Today, I'm going to talk to you about a subject that I would guess that the majority of you are very familiar with. So it's likely going to be review. But, so I do hope, though, that there are some points that you might happen to find useful. But the topic is special education. And I teach science and math to students who are mildly cognitively impaired at HH Dow High School. And we have 43 students in our program. Our students are eligible to go to school until they're 26 years of age, although most of them do not stay that long. The majority of our students in our district do transition onto a post-secondary program where they gain additional skills in employment, working toward gaining housing, and develop a transportation plan that suits their needs. The Michigan Administrative Rules for Special Education, also known as MARS, provides the criteria in how students become eligible for special education. And in my career, I've worked with every one of those disabilities except for the early childhood development delay. People often make the mistake with thinking that eligibility determines programming, when in fact, that is the function of the Individualized Education Program, the IEP. The IEP team works together to set services that are tailored to the student in the district and offers FAP, Free and Appropriate Public Education. A prime example of this at Dow High School is that we have 43 students in, who are on a certificate of attendance. Modifications, on the other hand, are actually changing the general education curriculum to meet the students' needs. This typically would be done for a student on a certificate track rather than on the diploma track, which would, of course, be an IEP decision. By law, teachers must log how often and when the accommodation for the IEP is used. There are two federal laws that cover students with disabilities. The Individual, the Individual Education Plan falls under the IDEA, the Individual with Disabilities Education Act, and partly under the ADA, Americans with Disabilities Act. And the 504 Plan falls only under the ADA, the Americans with Disabilities Act. Both require a student to have a disability, but the main difference is that the Individualized Education Plan provides specialized instruction, which includes goals and objectives, where the 504 Plan is not a special education program. However, the 504 Plan does focus on how the student learns and provides accommodations in which all the students' teachers must follow. As part of the IEP process, when a student will turn 16 within the IEP year, a transition plan is required by law. The components of this plan include the student's strengths, preferences, and interests. In our school district, the assessment given to complete the transition plans called the STAT, or the Student Transition Assessment Tool. During the administering of this test, students not only identify interests, but also needs in areas such as employment, training, work experience, adult living skills, and daily living skills. This plan helps facilitate a smooth transition for our students as they choose their path and begin their journey into adulthood. This completes my portion, and I'm going to turn it over to Candace.
And since our computer is acting temperamental, I'm going to have to ask you to help me turn the slides because I don't want to move it.
No, that's just fine. I can definitely help out with that.
As a general education teacher, I also understand the importance of creating an inclusive environment and providing accommodations. And we heard in a previous presentation about the tiers. Tier One interventions would be interventions that you're providing for all students, students of diverse needs, including those with disabilities or non-disabilities. The universal design for learning is an educational framework that provides all students with equal opportunities to learn by removing the barriers and addressing the needs of the diverse learners. So this would be interventions provided for all students. The concept of UDL is based on the idea that there's no one-size-fits-all approach to education, and instructional practices and materials should be designed to accommodate all learners and all variabilities of learners. First and foremost, a lesson should be engaging and presented using various styles, providing options for engaging learners by tapping into their interests, offering choices, varying the ways in which the content is presented, and those are some of the best practices for the UDL. This helps to keep the student motivated and invested in their learning, and also caters to the different learning styles and preferences in the classroom. Examples could be providing videos, PowerPoint, songs, textbooks, articles, videos, audio recordings, different things that would help to convey the meaning of the text or the meaning of the curriculum, but in multiple different ways so that the students are highly engaged. UDL guidelines also acts that teachers be strategic and use multiple means of action and expression, which means that it is best practice to allow the students to demonstrate their understanding and knowledge in various ways. This could include offering options for written assignments, oral presentations, projects, and other forms of assessments, whether they're formative or summative. On the next slide, I have listed some of the tips for engagement. There are 10 tips that I found when I was doing my research on UDL, and tip number 10, if I'm counting down, would be support risk-taking. An environment that supports engagement would provide learners the opportunity to push themselves beyond the baseline expectations, so it would be an environment where you support risk-taking. Number nine would be to offer time for active reflection on learning and engagement. So you could do this by providing exit tickets that ask them to reflect on their learning, perhaps a question like, what strategy did you use to get your answer? Or turn and talk to your neighbor about how you feel about this concept, basically igniting metacognition in a lesson in a child. Number eight would be to share examples and non-examples. Providing examples and non-examples for an assignment will highlight key components of the lesson and also let the student know exactly what the learning goal is, and this is always helpful. It helps to make the expectation clear so that the learner knows where they should focus their efforts when they're doing their work. Number seven is increase opportunities for collaboration. Fostering collaboration can generate new ideals, consolidates understanding, it generates ideals for building relevancy, and it offers opportunities for the students to be active participants in the learning environment, and it also promotes academic discourse, which is always fun in a classroom. Number six, ensuring that the resources and supports meet the demands of the task. In highly engaging classrooms, there are options available that are relevant to the task, so you, you'll see things like technology and manipulatives and artifacts and other items that are useful for supporting the learning. On the next slide, there are a couple more tips, like incorporating authentic and relevant examples. Authenticity is always good in a classroom. It creates buy-in. By weaving real-world examples throughout the lesson, you not only make the content more interesting, but it's more relevant for the students, and it's helpful to get the students engaged because they can see the practical applications for what they are learning. Number four is frequent feedback. When you offer feedback in a timely way, that encourages the learners to persist through the challenges, and it helps them have the desire to excel. Number three, present flexible options. Offering the students options for how they learn can help them with demonstrating what they know. It encourages creativity. It encourages achievement and mastery at a high level. Some of the other tips for engagement would be to minimize distractions and create clear and specific goals. Next, we have just a bibliography, letting you know where we got our resources from. And then we're going to move into the next portion where we talk about the fact that Bridget and I, we have the opportunity to sit on the Special Education Advisory Committee. We had the opportunity to attend the CAC retreat back in August where we were formally introduced to the committee, and over the last three months, we've been attending the meetings monthly. I even had the opportunity to present out at the November meeting, so these are a couple of pictures of us doing that work, which is always rewarding. Next, Bridget and I, in early November, along with six other Regional Teachers of the Year, had the opportunity to attend the defeat the label conference, so I'm moving into MTOI updates now. There, we sat on a 2023 Conversations on Bullying panel, and we discussed the topic and how it is being addressed in our respective districts. We know that discussing bullying is essential for the overall well-being of students, for the prevention of harm, the creation of safe and inclusive environments, and it should be the collective effort for all stakeholders to promote cultures that reject bullying and embrace kindness and respect. And I really enjoyed the conversation that we had earlier with the students who were here talking about that safe environment and the safe space that they were creating. That was very, very timely and needed. A little closer to home, on the next slide, wanted to highlight some things I'm doing back at my own school. One of the events that I coordinate at my school, Mann Learning Community, every year is STEAM Night. It's one of the many parental engagement events that I do every year, and this year in November, we moved it to November instead of the spring. I had over 120 families, about 230 people come out to attend LEGO STEAM Night, and it dispelled the myth that certain people or certain groups of people are not active or willing to come to after-school activities. So again, I had 230 people, moms, dads, grandmas, grandpas, children, coming out to participate in these activities where they're doing engineering, and they're doing mathematics, and they're doing art, and it was a beautiful thing to witness. I even had some members of the media out to take pictures because, you know, my school always gets these great numbers, and they want to know, what are we doing to get these parents out? Because, again, there's a narrative that they don't come out, but this is a testament that they do come out. If you have the event, if you promote it, and you give them a good time, they will come out and they will be active participants in the learning process with their students. Part of my MTOI platform is to promote parents as partners, and I think that this activity is one of the many ways that I'm able to do that in my home school. After that, I had the opportunity to visit Dearborn Public Schools. I visited several elementary schools and secondary, secondary elementary schools, and I was especially delighted to visit the preschool, and that, those are the pictures that I have up there. I wasn't aware that this was a thing before, but I got to see one of the programs that they had at the preschool building. It was the Strong Beginnings Program, and this is a program that's funded by Michigan that is a free program for eligible three-year-olds, and I think it's one of the very few in the state of Michigan, so that was very cool to see the children in action, and it made me miss having small children in a home. They were very eager to give me Play-Doh pizza and things like that, so it was a great experience. I also got to visit a few of the, it's still on this slide, a few of the Montessori classrooms that they had in Dearborn, and I was able to see the difference between traditional classrooms and Montessori classrooms. They're a little less structured and more student-led, and I saw the students actually sitting on their Montessori mats, and it was, it was interesting to see because they had the freedom and ability to work or play on the floor and decide what it was that they were going to do, and it was a, something that I hadn't seen in the other districts that I have visited so far. The next slide, I had the opportunity to, lastly, go to Grand Rapids. Last month, I had the opportunity and privilege to present with Stephanie Nielsen, and we discussed place-based education. And I was able to go to her home district and to her school and see place-based education in action. Her school, Shamed Elementary School, is a champion for place-based education. They had this great outdoor space, which was like acres and acres, and I was very jealous. It was like football fields upon football fields of outdoor space, and each grade and class had a portion of grounds, which they maintained, and they took ownership of the environment. And all of the students there, they were involved in a whole lot of project-based learning. There was a monarch butterfly garden in front of the school, and in the picture, I have on my glasses, but it's still hard to see, the picture at the top right-hand corner, that's a presentation, there was a group of older students who came in, and they actually presented to me during our working lunch, and they described the monarch butterfly garden that they had planted, and it was a great conversation about how they picked the materials and how they researched butterflies and the soil and the this and the that, and it made, for a great conversation, and I'm sure, great learning for the students as they were able to dig into all of the different aspects, multidisciplinary and, or multidisciplinaries coming together to form this one butterfly garden. So it was very interested, interesting, and it was great to see them be able to present to me what it was that they learned. It was very hands-on, and I'm now a believer in place-based education. I think that's it for me, and Bridget, thank you once more for allowing me to present at the board meetings. Happy holidays to everybody if I don't see you after the meeting, and we are ready for questions. Thank you for letting us go out of order.
The Year. Board members' questions? Dr. Pritchett, Ms. Snyder?
Thank you. I wanted to thank you for doing the overview of the Special Education Process, because I think to the general public, it is confusing sometimes with all the acronyms, et cetera. So the slides you presented were, you know, very understandable, and I think gave a good big picture of the different services and the requirements, et cetera. So thanks for that. And always thank you to Candace for her reports, and especially on the LEGO night, getting parents out, getting them involved is still very important, especially at that age, so thank you.
Other questions or comments? Ms. Snyder? Thank you, Dr. Pritchett.
Did we get a copy of your slides? I, I'm not sure, but I'm sure we can...
It'd be great to share.
Yeah. You definitely could share that out.
If you would like them, I can send it to you, Nikki.
Okay. Thanks.
Other questions?
Okay. Just two things. One, I think that there is a power to rethinking the certification to which you refer. It's been a number of years of a teacher shortage, and particularly in special education, those categories have become increasingly challenging for us. So there is a group working on reflecting, as you know, about what those requisite categories ought to be, because 13 of them may have worked once upon a time, but they work less well now. The, the adverse impact of having so many is that you often get Mikey from the curb teaching your child rather than someone who's certificated in special education but who may not be as narrowly certificated as back in this, back in the day. So that is something that's an active conversation taking place by, by optimize. So that's one. And then the second thing is, is that I'm curious, Ms. Jackson, when students offered you pizza and Play-Doh, did they offer you the, the two for the same purposes?
It was all in one place. I think it was a buffet.
I can imagine, having both offered and been offered in the past. Teachers of the Year, thank you very much for your presentation. Happy holidays.
Thank you.
So, board, we are going to pivot to our report of the State Superintendent, if we could.
I'm going to be the State Superintendent?
I'm sorry, you can be the State, you can be the State Board President. I'll be the State Superintendent.
I don't know that I'm quite going fast. And I'll hold on. I'm going to just start with some words, and then I'll click. I know I told you otherwise. But thank you, Dr. Rice. It's December, and, you know, though many of us are thinking about friends and loved ones who we wish were still here, I know I am, but when I think about the month of December, I have thoughts of joy, peace, light, giving, hope, and unity that come to mind. And as I reflect on this season that we are in, I am reminded of a saying, and I think I heard the students, our advisory students, say a version of this, but it's a saying that's attributed to Mahatma Gandhi, that we must be the change that we wish to see. And as I have had the opportunity to travel Michigan, our great state, I have had the opportunity to realize more and more how interconnected that we are, and...
could.
I'm going to be the State Superintendent?
I'm sorry, you can be the State, you can be the State Board President. I'll be the State Superintendent.
I don't know that I'm quite going fast. And I'll hold on. I'm going to just start with some words and then I'll click. I know I told you otherwise. But thank you, Dr. Rice. It's December. And, you know, though many of us are thinking about friends and loved ones who we wish were still here, I know I am. But when I think about the month of December, I have thoughts of joy, peace, light, giving, hope, and unity that come to mind. And as I reflect on this season that we are in, I am reminded of a saying, and I think I heard the students, our advisory students, say a version of this, but it's a saying that's attributed to Mahatma Gandhi, that we must be the change that we wish to see. And as I have had the opportunity to travel Michigan, our great state, I have had the opportunity to realize more and more how interconnected that we are. And for all of us who are sitting around this table, we've driven from all parts of the state and we have arrived in the same place with the common interest in mind. And that is to ensure that our children have the promise of opportunity, that we provide guidance to policymakers and educators so that all children have access to an equitable education and safe, supportive, inclusive learning environments. And though we don't always agree on approach, I know that we are all mindful of the critical role that we play in the success of Michigan children, our diverse children, and the diverse pathways that they will take. And today, I want to thank each of you for your service and wish each of you the happiest of holidays. And I also want to share some highlights from this year and hoping that it sheds some joy and some light on today. So thank you, Jen.
Give that screen one moment. Maybe.
This moment is about our children not having to question whether their lawmakers are more focused on disarming them and their educators of books by Black authors and those that tackle issues like racism and gender identity than it is about disarming violent actors of weapons that are used to take their lives away.
Thank you.
So that's all on our $89 a month salary. And Mitch, I hope you didn't miss your cameo. But that's it, Dr. Rice. I turn it back over to you, the president. You, the president today?
Thank you. Thank you, Board President Pugh. I appreciate you reminding me of our respective roles. Good afternoon, Board. I hope that Board members and community members enjoyed their Thanksgiving. And for those who celebrated it, Diwali, the Hindu Festival of Lights, as you point out, it is the season of lights. And for those of you who are focused on different religions today and perhaps every day, happy Hanukkah, Merry Christmas, and happy Kwanzaa to those celebrating. Happy New Year to everyone. We are going to pivot because again, we're waiting for our presentation on, on youth and foster care and waiting for our full distinguished assemblage to arrive. We're going to have our state and federal updates. Mr. Marty Ackley, Director of the Office of Public and Governmental Affairs, will lead the state and federal legislative update, followed by Dr. Pritchett and Dr. Robinson. Mr. Ackley.
Thank you, Dr. Rice. Good to be with you today. Dr. Pugh, did not go without noticing that you wore green and white on there. I appreciate that very much. Yeah. The state legislature adjourned for the remainder of the year. Thus, there has been no legislative action on bills for the past month. The Senate is scheduled to come back into session January 10. The House is also scheduled to come back into session on January 10, but not expected to take any votes until after special elections are conducted in April for two House districts. House session days are scheduled through March to allow for bill introductions and enrollments. House committees are expected to meet during that time, however. The governor has signed several bills into law. The educator evaluation bills, there are two, Senate Bill 395 and Senate Bill 396. The default retirement system bill, which is House Bill 5021. And the voter pre-registration bill, which I mentioned, I mentioned all these last month. That bill is House Bill 4569. Those have all been signed by the governor and enacted with public acts. Bills that may see some movement in the Senate are House Bills 4928 and 4929. These are school bus fines and school bus stop-arm camera bills. Also, the, there are three bills dealing with foster care education, which we will hear about shortly. Those have passed the House. 104 to 3 was the vote, so it was overwhelmingly passed the House. And so those bills are now in the Senate Committee on Housing and Human Services. And we expect some action when the Senate comes back. Other legislative action, the support staff is substitute teachers. House Bill 4549 was reported from the House Education Committee. That's still on the floor of the House. It's not been reported out. So that won't be reported out of the House until they come back to vote in April. Charter of school financial transparency bills. The bills have had their first hearing in the House Education Committee. They're still in the House Education Committee. They've not been reported out yet. The Senate Bill 463, which is the Fast Food to Graduate Bill, which has been discussed a few times here on the Board, that passed the Senate 20 to 18. It's in the House now and it's in the House Education Committee. And we're not sure what the interest is there as to moving that bill or not. So that is my report. And I will respectfully hand it over to the chairperson of the State Board of Education Legislative Committee, Dr. Judith Pritchett.
Thank you, Marty. We did not meet this month due to the fact that the legislature was not in session. We are going to meet again on January 3rd at 12:30. It's, and if you go to your calendar, it's always a link, Zoom link, or Teams, or whatever platform we're using that particular week. We are also discussing behind the scenes. We have no plans firmed up yet, but there is interest from several board members to getting together for a lunch with legislators. Obviously, with this schedule of theirs, we're trying to determine when would be the best time for that. So we'll keep you updated on that. And that's all I've got. Thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Pritchett. Dr. Robinson?
I do not have a report.
That was succinct. Questions for Mr. Ackley, please.
So I just want to make sure I understand. So they're going back in January, but no, so just committee hearings?
In the House. The Senate is going to be in full with voting and everything.
Got it. Okay.
Right. Yeah, because the House has a 54-54 balance now, because two representatives were voted mayors back in their home districts.
Okay. So no vote scheduled until?
Not in the House.
Not in the, on the House side?
Not on the House. Yeah, they will have session. From my understanding, it'll just be no attendance, no voting. But because they are in session, they can still, representatives can still introduce bills and they can still do business. They can do, they can, you know, if the Senate passes bills without changing them, they can still enroll them. And so that's more administrative purposes that the House will be, you know.
But committees will be here.
Committees will be able to hear.
So I'm wondering if there may be some thought, I'm just throwing this out, if the, if the discussion regarding the meeting for lunch to be scheduled, maybe, and I don't know, I can't remember how it was fashioned, but perhaps that might be a time in terms of maybe like in proximity to the House Education Committee? Or I can't remember if it was determined which committees you were going to schedule the lunch with. I don't know. Can't remember if it was education and education and approach.
Education and approach, as I recall.
Okay. So that may be some thought to looking at when they're meeting, when they're, at least on the House side, they're meeting and look at scheduling something then because they may be more inclined to meet if they're not having session but just having committee hearings. I don't know.
Right.
It's just a thought.
Yep. We can certainly discuss with the House chairs.
Sure. And see what their availability looks like.
And their scheduling for meetings.
We have decided that it would be easier if we did that on a separate day from a board meeting. So that way, we're not rushing and, you know, so it would be another trip to Lansing, per se, for anybody who's interested. But we'll give you fair warning on that.
Right. And Representative Young is here, so in case she's listening, she can maybe share this back.
She was not only listening, but every time you, you got it right, she was head bobbing. But you didn't get it right 100% of the time.
Oh, no.
And she's the next speaker.
She can tap this.
Thank you very, no, I think you batted a thousand, Ms. Ackley. Thank you very much. Dr. Pugh, to you. Thank you, Ms. Lipton.
And I might have missed this, but I don't know if you mentioned the supplemental and where we are on the supplemental. And then just two things with, with, in addition to that question, I do want to first, and I don't think I did this last month, I do want to thank the department for the advocacy around the supplemental. I just, you know, think that we need to make sure that people know that what the department and the State Board of Education does. And whenever we get opportunity, we put that out in the atmosphere just in case people don't know. One question that I have is around Flint because I've received questions from Flint, Flint Community Schools. And one of the questions is how do they get left out? But I guess the more important question is how are they included? And I definitely would like to support advocating that if it's, if it's possible.
Well, so, so, Dr. Pugh, a few things. First of all, you know, and board members may, may recall as well, that six districts were included in debt relief in the supplemental. Inkster, Pontiac, Willow Run, Ypsilanti, Benton Harbor, and Muskegon Heights. Flint was not included in that. And this is a supplemental that has yet to be signed into law, but we anticipate the signing into law shortly. We advocated strongly for debt relief for those jurisdictions. We also advocated for debt relief and continue to advocate for debt relief for Flint Community Schools as well. We believe that the conditions that affected Flint Community Schools are the conditions that affected the other six. And that if one is going to provide debt relief for the other six, as the legislature voted to do, that one should also provide debt relief for Flint Community Schools as, as well.
Thank you. Happy to hear that. And then just one other question, you know, I'm going to ask about MYLEAP. And I think we were asking, I don't know if Stephanie's on, but that we definitely wanted to get an update and wanted to get someone from the department. We know that there has been an interim director that has been named. And any thoughts that we have on the Michigan Growing Together report that should be coming out any day now?
Sure. So MYLEAP, according to Executive Order 2023-6, signed into law by the governor July 11th, 2023, began on December 1st. And as you may recall, Executive Order 2023-6 affects seven departments in state government, four associated with the formulation of MYLEAP. MDE, Licensing and Regulatory Affairs, Labor and Economic Opportunity, and Treasury. So four departments had staff that moved to a new MYLEAP effective Friday, December 1st. Michelle Richard, Senior Education Advisor for the governor, is the acting director of MYLEAP. We're in regular communication with staff in MYLEAP, including Acting Director Richard. Deputy Superintendent Dr. Michelle Harmela has been our point person. But Dr. Carnell and I met with Acting Director Richard yesterday with Dr. Harmela and a number of former MDE, now MYLEAP, staff as we work on a transition that's going to take several months to effectuate. The idea that the transition, the transition ended December 1st, of course, is not, is not accurate. The transition continued December 1st and will continue for another three-quarters-plus of a year. It's a lot of transition. There are three offices, as you may recall, in new, the new MYLEAP, the Office of Early Childhood Education, the Office of Higher Education, and an Office of Educational Partnerships. The second of the three has nothing to do with MDE. It is associated with primarily Treasury and Labor and Economic Opportunity. The Early Childhood Education Office affected MDE and Licensing and Regulatory Affairs and LARA. And Ed Partnerships is a, is a mishmash. There is some new staff that the state legislature approved for MYLEAP. But that staff, because there weren't, there was not the requisite supermajority, that did not gain immediate effect. And so that new staff, if I recall correctly, Mr. Ackley, and Rep. Young is, is giving me the encouraging nods, I appreciate that. That staff will be available February 13th, 2024.
Okay.
Please.
In addition to that, when will, you know, the Attorney General said, nothing has happened enough to make a decision regarding our lawsuit of the governor and trying to stop portions of this. At what point, or will you let us know when that threshold has been exceeded? I don't know if it's the physical movement of certain individuals or, you know, somehow power is formally transferred or exactly what it will be. But are you going to let us know of that? Or how will we know that we need to go back to the Attorney General and say we're ready to move forward?
So a few things. First of all, we are working closely with MYLEAP to ensure that there's no adverse impact to students and staff and programs across the state. That's our major focus, students and staff across the state, supporting young people, their families, the staff that support young people on a daily basis. We're committed to that. We're going to continue to lean into that over the, over the coming months. That's the first thing. The second thing is, is if I recall the AG's letter accurately, what the AG said was that nothing on the face of the executive order, nothing on the face of Executive Order 2023-6 was unconstitutional, that there may or may not be something in the implementation thereof, but nothing in the writing, the four corners of the executive order was unconstitutional. And that if we chose down the line to raise a question about the implementation thereof,
to, um, raise a question about the implementation thereof and, and to ask her about the constitutionality of a particular action, above and beyond the writing of the executive order itself, she would be happy to consider that, that she hadn't ruled out a, a ruling associated therewith. But, but the writing, strictly speaking, was not unconstitutional. There was nothing unconstitutional about it. That was what.
In her opinion, right.
Well, she is, yeah, she's the top lawmaker, she's, yeah, she's the, the.
No, I understand.
She's the head of the largest law firm in the state.
But she wasn't making laws, she wasn't saying there isn't anything, she's saying in her opinion, there isn't anything.
You asked her for her opinion and she gave it to you, yes, yeah.
So, okay, but I mean, to follow up, will you let us know if you think there has been an action that crosses that line?
I will be happy to. Yeah.
Thank you.
Um, other questions, más preguntas, plus de cuestion. More questions. Once, twice, thrice. Mr. Ackley, you can't give it away.
My pleasure.
Thank you. Ken Cook, do we have a full complement? Do we, do, do we have everyone or no?
I think so.
I believe.
Delso is that everyone?
Just waiting on Sabah, the students are here, Sabah is walking up now.
Okay, she is, okay. Well, we're, we're going to introduce them, because it's quite a, quite a list of people. And, uh, I figure by the time I finish this list, folks will be, um, will be likely in attendance. Next item on today's agenda board at 2:54 PM is a presentation on the efforts to address policy gaps in support of youth in foster care. This presentation will feature the collaborative efforts among the Michigan Department of Education, Michigan Department of Health and Human Services, Park West Foundation, and State Representative Stephanie Young to address policy gaps in support of youth in foster care. We welcome our presenters, Dr. Delso Chapman, Deputy Superintendent in the Division of Educators, Student and School Support, Sarah Goad, State Administrative Manager, Holder Youth and Education Office, Out of Home Bureau, Children's Services Administration, Michigan Department of Health and Human Services, Dr. Corinne Edwards, Director of Office of Educational Supports, Ms. Sabah Gabray, Program Director, the Park West Foundation, uh, Mr. Demetrius Starling, Senior Deputy Director, Children's Services Administration, Michigan Department of Health and Human Services, and Representative Stephanie A. Young, Chairwoman of the House Committee on Families, Children, and Seniors. In addition, we have joining us, uh, as presenters, uh, our students Carlos Christian, Alexia, Alyssa, Danella, and Raymond. Presenters, welcome.
Thanks, Dr. Rice, and good afternoon, Board. I am joined by colleagues from the MDE Office of Educational Supports, Dr. Edwards, Park West Foundation, Director Sabah Gabray, and our, um, distinguished students that are, and our youth that are with her today. Also, Deputy Director Starling from the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services, and the distinguished representatives, State Representative Young is with us today. We are elated to share efforts to address policy gaps in support of youth in foster care. The elements of our sharing are noted here. We will start our discussion by presenting Michigan Foster Care Youth Graduation Rate Data, followed by a summation of the Michigan Legislative Foster Care Bill Package by State Representative Stephanie Young. We also will have student voice and their actionable outcomes shared by Director Sabah Gabray and our student delegation of Park West Foundation. MD, HHS, and MDE will share efforts, followed by collective next steps. So setting the tone. Students experiencing foster care, including placements in child caring institutions, are at greater risk of not graduating in Michigan. These students experience disrupted education. Graduation data demonstrates that students in Michigan who are experiencing foster care are graduating at a significantly lower rate, lagging by up to 40 percentage points when compared with a rate for all students in the four-year cohort. Rates improve when students are provided more time. The five and six-year cohort graduation rates have increased by as much as 20% for students experiencing foster care. We see here and we note that additional time can make a significant difference. So with that as our tone setting, we will now hear from State Representative Stephanie Young.
Well, good afternoon, everyone, Dr. Rice and to the Board. It's a pleasure to be here on Today. Um, but as we were talking about level setting, I just like to level set and, you know, just deal with what we dealing with on Today. How about we put it just like that? And so it was last summer, last summer, I became aware of a news story. A news story that NBC Universal put out. And I gotta tell you, I'll never forget the headline. The headline was, "The state took children from their parents and then failed to give them a real education." I liked to hit the floor. I said, clearly, that's not true. My children graduated from DPS, Detroit Public Schools. I know we can do a good job, that's right, Teacher of the Year. I know we can do a good job educating our kids, but, but just like anything, anywhere, there can be room for improvement. And so honestly, it was this story, uh, and the opportunity to meet with and listen to several of these young people that are behind me that caused me to be at this table on Today. The one thing, though, that I was real clear the young people wanted, they told me, Representative, we want to get high school diplomas. We don't just want to get GDs. We want to get high school diplomas, that's what our friends get, so that's what we want. And I listened to them. And right then, I began working with the amazing policy team that we have, and we started drafting legislation. Um, that could be the start to correcting some of the challenges, challenges that these young people face getting their education. I have to tell you, I am forever grateful for the team at MDE, for all of the assistance that they gave me and, and, and the policy team in crafting this legislation to get it to where it is today. This three bill package is designed to ensure children in the foster care system are properly educated overall and are accounted for, just like other youth in the educational system. House Bill 4676 addresses the concerns reported by some youth in the foster care system that they took classes in residential facilities that often did not count towards getting their high school diploma or their graduation requirements. The bill prioritizes meeting the graduation requirements for the Michigan merit curriculum, eliminating any confusion related to the types of classes that they should be taking. This bill also ensures foster youth have access to their educational records, like any other youth not in foster care, and that they be placed within five school days to minimize extended gaps after initial placement. The collection, the, the, uh, House Bill 4677 creates a reporting protocol required each year that provides progress on the educational outcome of an estimated 10,000 foster youth currently in the system. Uh, you can see on these slides some of the metrics that we're looking to capture. This collection and review of good data is important to legislators, just like it is for you all in this room. And then lastly, House Bill 4678, which I shared with my good colleague, Representative Kimberly Edwards. This bill requires MDE to regularly review the educational programs provided by these residential facilities, these child caring facilities, to ensure that they comply with the new laws once passed. We all know successful completion of high school, for many, is their first major educational achievement. And obtaining a high school diploma is considered a rite of passage. It's also a gateway to other steps in life, including securing employment and going after additional education. Having access to a quality education is an important milestone, helping change the course of life for youth who may start out in the foster care system. So I'm grateful for my colleagues who supported this and other bills that aim to make the quality of living and education better for our foster youth. In the coming year, I will continue to work with anyone interested in building a better future for these young people, because it is up to us to give them the chance they deserve, not just to survive, but to thrive. And so I thank you for the opportunity to address you all today. Uh, I have a saying, and folks know it, it's my tagline on just about everything, and it's quite simply, love is the work. That's what drives the work in me, and I'm certain it drives it in you as well. Thank you all so much.
And now we will transition to Park West Foundation Student Voice, Student Voices in Action.
Okay. Well, first I would like to say thank you, Honorable Representative Young. My name is Chris Randall, for those who know me or who don't. I am the Director of Advocacy at Park West Foundation, empowering foster youth through technology, also known as FYTEC. Um, the Michigan Foster Youth motto is, "Nothing About Us Without Us." So, and we can't thank you enough for treating us with respect, love, and involving our voice every step of the way. The process has been life-changing for all of us, and it made us all very hopeful. We were there when the bill was introduced, we were there when the bill was passed to the committee hearing, and we were there when the package passed in the House. So, once again, I would like to thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Alyssa Andrews, and I am the Communications Director for FYTEC. That's me in a blue graduation cap, well, the picture's gone now, but it was me in a, um, blue graduation cap right there with a portion of our Park West Foundation members. Um, at college prep, we had a full year of support to prepare for college, complete with educational, cultural, and social support, which included mentors, transportation, food, college tours, financial literacy, and more for students in foster care from Wayne, Oakland, and Macomb Counties. We met weekly at Tech Town Detroit, and our class decided to add a second day for rehearsals to produce an original play on graduating high school and going to college as part of our graduation celebrations, which was later featured on Channel 7. Almost 60% of our peers in foster care are not getting the opportunity to graduate high school like us, and they are not prepared to receive this support to transition to post-secondary institutions. 70% of students in foster care want to attend college, but only 10% do. And over 18 years of experience working with students in foster care has given Park West Foundation a unique opportunity to ask the right questions, get closer to the root causes of why, and identify youth-driven solutions as foster youth are, after all, the experts in our life. Only we have lived. There should truly be nothing about us without us.
Thank you, Alyssa, Chris, and thank you, um, the Board of Education and also Superintendent Rice. And I'm seeing a lot of great people who are committed to advancing our young people's education. It's great to be here. And I am Sabah Gabray with Park West Foundation Program Director and also Advisor of our FYTEC youth. Um, we are really grateful for this collaboration to finally see all these laws actually, um, becoming, um, a reality for a lot of our young people, because the problems and the challenges and the barriers are experienced by the young people in a way that is just harsh. Um, and it's not allowing the young people to have a, an opportunity to start, uh, a hopeful life. So we're really grateful to be here. So we didn't just, uh, all of a sudden, uh, start advocating for education, so we kind of go way back, so I just wanted to give you a little bit of an overview. We were here last year, and we're so glad to be back here to, to kind of be able to share the things that we've been able to advance thus far. So identifying these systemic barriers and advancing foster youth voice has been like a journey of almost two decades for us. Albertson and Mitzi Scaglione of Park West Gallery in Southfield, Michigan founded the Park West Foundation in 2006, after listening to foster youth themselves. Um, and educational challenges were evident as youth struggled with enrollment barriers even then. Uh, and they've been out of school for months, um, at a time, and the barriers were something we were trying to figure out, what is it that we can do, and we, we went into action right away. We began by responding to urgent needs of a dozen students in foster care in Wayne and Oakland Counties, which quickly grew to collaborations where we provided added support to 300 Wayne County Michigan Youth Opportunities Initiative. Wayne County by itself had that many numbers, and 150 of those were involved with workforce developments, which we also started to work with. Um, they were the ones doing targeted education at the time. Youth defined our roles to their, uh, schools as mentors or family members as they never knew about court-appointed surrogates. We didn't know about the education rights holder. It could be something that's happened after, but that's something that's life-changing thus far. Our workforce partnership and education-focused, uh, youth advocacy work began with Michigan's Children's Kids Speak. They're the ones who kind of got us to start doing this, uh, some time ago. Some of you may be familiar with Michigan's Children. We partner with Michigan State, uh, University, right here on Lansing, for statewide foster youth summer camp to prepare students for college from 2008 to 2011, where a Kids Speak event actually inspired the launch of the Foster and Future Scholarship, and also our own college program that Alyssa just talked about. Um, we also were able to send students to Western Michigan University when the CEDAS Scholars Initiative began, the campus support programs that some of you may have heard of, um, and collaborated with ed planners for 10 years. So the Michigan ed planners were also really extremely important to our partnership and work in education for foster youth. We helped to identify Wayne County graduating seniors for foster care from 2011 and held ceremonies each year until the pandemic shut down and supported, uh, also Oakland County and Macomb County students in foster care. In 2013, we launched the largest trauma-informed college and resource fair in Michigan after realizing that the annual statewide conference had barriers that excluded certain populations, including Wayne County youth. And we were able to turn up the largest population, so, which was really wonderful. Um, and we also were able to repeat this resource and college fair in Kent County and Genesee County, um, again, with great turnout. Uh, from 2014 to 2018, we facilitated the Youth Education Liaison Initiative in 33 counties in partnership with DHHS and MYOI, where trained youth leaders were able to share educational resources and updates to their youth board on a monthly basis. Youth Education Liaisons came out to Lansing annually also to be trained together with DHHS, MYOI site coordinators and DHHS ed planners that we do not, do not have any longer. We learned and grew on, we grew on our youth advocacy work from the leaders of the Youth Education Liaisons, uh, who benefited from national internship and training programs through Foster Club, Annie E. K. C. Foundation, National Foster Youth Initiative, and especially the Congressional Coalition for Adoption Institutes in Washington, DC, which improved how we focused on our own advocacy and lasting solutions in Michigan. In 2008, our first top focus was digitizing an interactive child welfare computer system that would allow effective data collection and access to records and vital information needed for youth to navigate the child welfare system, school, and life. The idea of the youth-centered computer system design came from a graduating senior that was participating in college prep, Penny Richards, um, who is now graduating from Wayne State University this year. And we learned to focus on specific issues, again, from our students, from our leaders who were interning in this, uh... who were interning in this organization in Washington, D.C. So, now, there are two reasons why our group was prepared to track, lead, and speak on funding that came to Michigan to support students in foster care, eleven million dollars during the pandemic in 2020, and how we were able to focus on solutions when Christian became devastated that three years of schooling did not count, three years of high school schooling. So, we were able to be solution-focused, because we had youth that have been trained, that were guiding us on how to do this. Since the pandemic, we have added a high school completion initiative for people who've dropped out, for people who've interrupted school, for students who need to get back in school and on track. Leaning on youth and lived expertise of foster care, in February 2021, FYTEC launched a convening with support from Michigan State Board of Education, co-Vice President Tiffany Tilly, Deputy Superintendent Mike Rice, and also Deputy, I mean, MDE's Kyle Grant, who really helped us, as well as MDHHS Rachel Willis. And in addition to the convening, our team worked with youth focus groups that the youth themselves guided, Director Demetrius Sterling, thank you, and other DHHS administrators also in the House, as well as many others, including the stakeholders, that really helped us to raise these recommendations and get them focused. So, we really, really appreciate how we came to our policy recommendations of July 2022. We were humbled to see many of the youth recommendations enshrined in the state's Board of Education Resolution of December thirteenth, which was unanimously adopted by Congresswoman Haley Stevens and also the Michigan Democratic Convention on February eleventh, 2023, due to the tireless efforts of also the Honorable State Co-Vice President Tiffany Tilly. So, thank you for doing what you've been able to do with us. So, go ahead, Christian.
Absolutely. So, as I've shared multiple times, so you might or might not know, in last year's summer, 2021, I announced my educational goal to peers at FYTEC to enroll in dual high school enrollment, which is basically me taking on, you know, trying to get extra credit because I was doing well in school. But I found out I had no credits nor transcripts prior from three years of attending high school. I was devastated and discouraged. I wanted to drop out, because I didn't want to have to restart the high school again. In spite of Family Educational and Privacy Rights Act, FERCPA, my legal parents for education attorney Rod Johnson, efforts of more than six months to assess my transcripts and my educational records resulted in absolutely nothing. The responsibility of educational foster youth lies on MDE and MDHHS, not facilities. Students in foster care deserve to know how they are doing in school and review their records as required by FERCPA, same as other students. We should have our PSAT scores, know how we are doing in science, math, and reading as required by every student to CSESA. We convened six conversations with community leaders, MDE and MDHHS, with the belief that children in foster care are real kids who want to be treated like real children and be allowed to attend real schools. We also invited two dozen youth with lived expertise of residential foster care who lost years of transcripts and credits. Ten of those students, including myself, were interviewed by NBC News. We were also able to get encouraging many grants toward youth stipends from Michigan Youth Justice Center and the Skilman Foundation. Embracing our FYTEC values of respect, love, family, self, family service, self-accountability, community, and faith, we have been able to be heard and support the beginning changes that can help reinforce these mandates for students in foster care.
Good afternoon. My name is Carlos Correa, and I'm the Vice President of FYTEC. I started my high school experience in a residential placement where students with a wide range of age difference were in front of the same instructor, learning the same material. School was routinely suspended due to incidents and fights. Many of my peers who spent time in these residential schools earned no credits or credit for work they completed. Thankfully for me, my caseworker advocated for me to assist in a real school. But I was in place for like one month without receiving education because of the constant fights. Educational standards and assessment should not be redefined by facilities. Foster youth who are in the system for no fault of their own must be allowed to attend a normal public school without having to earn it. I graduated with honors from a public school in spite of studying late because of residential school. Whoever my school was not prepared to support me or know that I was in foster care. They kept insisting I get permission from my landlord to attend my doctor's appointment. I couldn't live without his authorization when I was the right holder myself. Even though they were law supporting and protecting students in foster care, schools do not know who they are or how to identify them or their educational rights holders in order to support them.
In high school, I was always on the honor roll. My school documented that I was experiencing challenges and trauma, but never offered an intervention. They had no idea that I was in foster care. Studies show that foster youth experience almost twice as much trauma as combat veterans. Schools must prepare to offer spaces, supports, and intervention to ensure the well-being of students in foster care so that they can continue to learn. My school offered me no safe place or support. They did not protect me from bullying. Instead, they resorted to a disciplinary hearing, trying to expel me from my school for trying to advocate for myself from continuous bullying. Although I transferred to a new school, there was no transportation plan, and I struggled to get to and from school. I was unprepared when my foster care case closed while in school, discontinuing many of my supports and services. I didn't know where my transcripts were. It was hard to go to get my credit so that I could finish school. I didn't know about my resources and closed case services until supports were put in place by Park West Foundation. Students in foster care deserve to know what is happening and where they can go for help through an interactive DHHS computer system that could also collaborate with the school system and the courts to share records seamlessly.
Good afternoon. My name is Alexia Roberts, and I am a youth advocate with FYTEC. I was placed with my grandmother, with my two siblings, with barely any resources. My grandmother struggled and regularly put us out for different reasons. Ultimately, we all had to drop out of school and started getting jobs at the ages of thirteen and fourteen years old. Later, we found out my parents pay child support to the state, and the state was taking their social security benefits that was designated for us children. We would have been able to take care of our basic needs if we had access to those funds, and we would have been able to stay in school. At sixteen, I was pregnant and in foster care. My school did not know I was in foster care and did not support me. The students and staff bullied me as they looked at me as a bad influence for having been pregnant and provided with no support. I was encouraged to drop out, which I did. Schools that receive Title I funding are required to engage parents and family, but I experienced the opposite. Students in foster care are invisible in schools, as schools have no way of identifying students in foster care or knowing who the education rights holders are for the students.
Good afternoon. My name is Anella Anderson, and I am a youth advocate with FYTEC. I was returned home from foster care at age twelve. However, the situation that brought me into foster care was not yet resolved at home, and I ran away to Common Ground Sanctuary for minors repeatedly. Even though I was asking for help to get away from my situation, they couldn't help me, as I had already been evaluated for three weeks at their program before. That forced me to be charged as a delinquent and incorrigible minor, where I spent over a year in a secure facility, six months after I exited foster care. I had not committed any crime. I only tried to get away into a safe place. I cannot remember what school was like in these facilities, where I had to get up in the middle of the night to fight youth who were all older than me. When I appeared at court, I remember having to drag a heavy set of chains that wrapped around my waist and was tied to my hands and down to my ankles. The extensions of my braids were pulled off by staff. Over sixty percent of traffic women report that they were former foster children. There must be a way to help children who run away without criminalization.
It was difficult to watch her come into court at twelve, thirteen with heavy chains, only because she was trying to seek help. Schools and DHHS are collaborating, and they have to have a safe plan for runaway kids who attend school and not just collaborate and not know what it means to tell on runaway kids. So, there must be an intervention and a collaboration. So, I didn't mean to cry, so actually, I knew she was going to take me there. She hasn't talked about this before, so it's difficult, but this happens. This happens to children.
As we're listening to youth experiences, proposed solutions based on the PWF FYTEC values was driven by the belief that all students in foster care must have the same access and opportunity to prepare for high school graduation, earn post-secondary credentials, and reach their full potential via A, uninterrupted public school education for entire school years in an environment where their health, stability, and safety are prioritized; and B, afforded all rights and protections according to the Every Student Succeeds Act, fostering connections, and Michigan's Top Ten Strategic Education Plan.
There's been progress made on the following selected recommendations, and we will hear the updates from both MDHS and MDE. These include transparency access and inclusion of educational rights holders, enrolling all students in foster care in incredibly bearing educational programs that lead towards high school diploma and post-secondary opportunities according to the Michigan Merit Curriculum, amend the educational portion of MDHS residential placement, contract clarifying rules of education and medical rights holders, and requiring the Michigan Merit Curriculum High School Diploma and Educational Development Plan to fund and restate the educational planner, to share lists of school dics, folders, foster care license to MDHS and private agency workers statewide currently.
To ensure school stability by addressing urgent needs of food, financial assistance, housing, and transportation, increase daily rate/stipend for both foster youth and foster parents as fifty-nine percent of Michigan students in foster care reported financial assistance as their second top urgent need. Seventy-four percent of Michigan students in foster care identified food insecurity as their highest need. Forty-seven percent of Michigan students in foster care reported transportation as their highest need. Fifty-five percent of Michigan students in foster care reported housing as their third top urgent need. We hope to see these next steps. The first one being fund and reinstate educational planners statewide. Ways youth and foster parent stipend to forty dollars per day. Enroll students immediately on the next open school day without pre-assessment and without any precondition with official transcript on hand and with clear plans for transportation. Require caseworkers to submit an academic progress update as well as the academic credit and records transfer plan at each hearing and before changing placement for a child of or youth in foster care. Youth must have access to information as to what is happening in their case, including access to accurate and complete educational records, transcripts needed to understand academic progress, and credits and assessments via coordinated use of technology. Youth-centered and co-created MDHHS computer systems can ensure not only access to information, but also youth voice, equity, and efficiency. Include education rights holders and eligible youth in all matters that affect their lives as legal parents or guardians. Amend the Michigan State Plan for tracking and assessing students in foster care with impute from educational rights holders/foster youth.
This will be the conclusion for us for right now.
All right. Good afternoon, Dr. Rice and esteemed board members. It's my pleasure and honor to be here with you today with these amazing thought partners on such a paramount subject. My name is Demetrius Sterling. I'm a Senior Deputy Director of Children's Services with the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services. And I just wanted to first and foremost level set with this group in regards to some of the work that we have in flight and also what led us here. So, since being in this role for two and a half years now as the Children's Services Director, these are the four priorities that I put in place as I started on this journey. So, safety and well-being of children in foster care, making sure that we keep children safe with their families if and all possible with services, timely reunification and permanency, and lastly, ensuring equitable practices in child welfare. I just wanted to pause there, because in regards to that last priority, I think it's truly important to lift up the fact that if we're talking about really making equitable practices in child welfare, hearing the voices of folks that have been impacted by our systems is truly important. And since being in this role, I've made it clear that leaning on foster parents, biological parents, and, you know, our young adults who have been in our systems is truly important. And we don't want to tokenize their voices. We want to make sure that they have an equal seat at the table. So, when they do come to the table, we make sure that their voices are heard, that they understand that without them, we can't drive practice and policy changes. And we also, we've made an avenue for us to be able to incentivize their time, because it's time well spent. We can't have people coming to, you know, our help, to our aid, to be at our table to talk about policy and practice changes without ensuring that they're incentivized for their time. So, this is a slide that I show with my staff internally and also external stakeholders on a monthly basis to track our monthly trends in regards to foster care. And those notes, and my eyes are kind of bad here. So, we have three lines here that underscore children under supervision, children in out-of-home care, removals and exits. And the key, of course, is for our exit rates to our pattern or our entry rates. So, just for a quick level set for definitions, children under supervision means any youth who is under the jurisdiction of our department for abuse and neglect or juvenile justice delinquency cases. Out-of-home care denotes when a youth is removed from parental custody and placed under the supervision of our department. This includes foster homes, relative homes, residential or child caring institutions, and independent living. For removal, that means when a child is under the jurisdiction of the court. The court can order that a child be removed from the home of their parental caregivers and placed under the care and supervision of our department. An exit means when court terminates jurisdiction and a youth exits care through reunification, adoption, guardianship, placement with a fit and willing relative, or another planned permanent living arrangement. Next slide. So, this chart indicates our current population of youth who are in congregate care. We have wavered around ten thousand children in foster care or young adults in foster care for the last several years. And that's a huge decline from several years ago. We were wavering around fourteen, between fourteen and fifteen thousand. And as you can see right now, we have around four hundred and sixty-eight youth out of the ten thousand who are currently in congregate care facilities. Again, that's, it's far too many for my liking, but still a huge increase, decrease, rather, from what we've seen in previous years. This next slide really indicates some of the pieces I've talked about in regards to uplifting youth voices. So, about a month and a half ago, we had the opportunity as a department to lift the voices of our youth who we've served in the past and who are all experts when it comes to our child welfare system. And Carlos and I had an opportunity to meet at the time, and he was really instrumental in providing some really good input and feedback to our department about potential policy and practice implementation and changes. We currently have youth experience groups for young adults who have been a part of the foster care and juvenile justice programs. We continue to push our MYOI and YVAC programs that provide support, training, and enrichment opportunities for our youth, including outings, virtual trainings on needed lessons such as financial literacy and diversity, equity, and inclusion. Going into 2024, we will relaunch our Eye Care for Children campaign, where we will seek to provide additional support for our youth experiencing child welfare. And to do so, we will consult with youth on what support looks like for us to ensure we are reaching our goal. And I don't know if Representative Young knows yet, but I think she's been tapped to be a part of the Eye Care for Children relaunch. The pictures that you see displayed here are from our recent first-ever CSA anti-racist conference, where we highlighted a panel of young adults who shared their experiences with the attendees. Their stories led to not only a standing ovation, but a better understanding from the mouth of youth what we must do as an administration to be successful. but a better understanding from the mouth of youth what we must do as an administration to be successful with fulfilling their needs while in care, setting them up for a better future with unlimited possibilities. Next slide. Uh, so this slide uh demonstrates some of our our efforts that directly impact our educational outcomes. The work that our department has done that directly impacts educational outcomes for youth and care are not limited to uh but but also uh really talk about some of the work we've done with our internal and external stakeholders. So contracts is a big piece of some of the work that we're doing. And again, it ties back to equity. You you can't just talk about policy and practice changes. We have to talk about contract changes and how we ensure that everyone has a a equal seat at the table. So updating our residential contracts to include requirements that youth be enrolled in credit bearing educational programs, which will lead to a high school diploma. Residential contracts, which will now include more language around education, specifically about the Michigan merit curriculum, and the youth should be working towards a high school diploma and have an educational development plan. We have two full-time analysts that have been hired by our administration and two of my business service centers to address educational needs and outcomes of youth in our s- our congregate care facilities. So you may have heard Sabah talk about the educational planners that we had allocated years ago, which were a a huge value for us, but unfortunately, in our last fiscal cycle, we lost allocation for some of those positions. I was able to carve out two of those educational analysts for youth who are in our congregate care facility. And the hope is that once we continue to demonstrate the value of these uh particular analysts, then we can ask for those allocations to be add added back into future um recommendations. Transportation, uh school-related transportation is one of the identify identify barriers for kids in foster care. It is required that we keep children and youth in the school of origin, but lack of transportation options often make that difficult to achieve for our youth. Our department is in the process of releasing a request for proposal to fund a more cost-effective, safe option for educational transportation in the southeast region of the state. If, no, when this is successful, our department will work to expand this statewide. Tutoring, our department has worked with staff from two new tutoring resources to expand opportunities for targeted assistance to work with our K to twelve youth experiencing foster care. Both new resources are available statewide and also have virtual options. A statewide communication was released to foster care staff to notify them of these new tutoring resources. Next slide. Uh, so these are more uh of our direct impacts that we have in conjunction with our partners such as M D E, our Michigan Children's um team, our Park West Foundation, Michigan Alliance for Families, the Arc Michigan, Fostering Success Michigan, and Alumni of Care. So right now, we have the surrogate parent guidance, which is uh as Michigan Department of Education worked on updating their guidance around appointing a surrogate parent for students who have I E Ps, our department collaborated and provided input regarding students who are experiencing foster care. The new guidance is now included in training and technical assistance that's provided to all of our foster care staff. Also, under foster care and educational work groups, a work group was established by our department to bring together multiple agencies and organizations that can positively impact educational requirements and experiences for our youth who are in foster care. So we look at our current educational outcomes for this population, and we work together collaboratively to improve these experiences and outcomes for our youth. The work group includes representatives from our department, M D E, Michigan's Children, Park West Foundation, Michigan Alliance for Families, Arc Family, Foster Success Michigan, and most important, our youth who are experiencing foster care. This work group has developed recommendations and a work plan of actionable collaborative tasks that will positively impact educational experiences and outcomes. Some recommendations such as policy and contract language changes have already been implemented while collaborative efforts continue on other fronts. So this is uh really some of the the most exciting work that's come out of the uh administration over the last uh couple of years, I believe. And part of this, sometimes when certain situations are showcased or highlighted in the news, sometimes it can end up badly, sometimes it can actually lead to impactful change. So there was a a story that came out over the summer in regards to youth who were transitioning out of foster care that didn't have access to um some of the the services and supports that they are are required to get or should get um as they transition transition to adulthood. So this was really uh some substantial changes that came about. And I have to again thank Sabah for just really being a staunch advocate um and just, you know, not losing any passion, not losing any any kind of uh steam when it came to making sure she advocated for her youth. So our food assistance program, uh a work group was established with Children's Services Administration and also our Economic Services Administration as we are bifurcated uh department to look at ways that we can better outreach to youth about applying for food assistance. Staff were assigned at the M D H H S Special Processing Unit at Central Office to assist youth with their application for food assistance. Outreach text messages uh were sent out by our Benefits Education Trust to youth who have open foster care cases, are age seventeen and up, and in independent living programs uh which uh span about six hundred youth. These texts all were being sent out to youth who are re- youth who have recently left foster care and are also up to eighteen and up. Both C S A and E S A released a statewide memo about the roles and responsibilities of foster care staff, eligibility staff, and special processing office staff. Our semi-annual transition meeting form was updated to include more specific information about food assistance that these youth are required to to get. Our semi-annual transitioning meetings also occur with youth starting at age fourteen. So again, I have the appendix again if of definitions are needed, but that is the conclusion of my piece. And I just want to say one thing uh before I hand it over that this is such a paramount subject. This is a subject that I I believe, you know, our department has leaned into uh quite extensively over the past couple of years, but we have so much work to do. And, you know, there's an old Japanese proverb that says that the best time to plant a tree was twenty-five years ago. The next best time is now. So it's not too late for us to make sure we provide the adequate supports and services for our youth who are exiting foster care. So thank you for your time.
I can just go in the teacher mode. I I can say.
Do you want me to go right here?
So as we are transitioning, we appreciate definitely um the conversation and discussion from our colleagues and partners. And now we will move into M D E efforts, starting with Dr. Edwards.
Sure. Um, as previously stated, and and I heard the students mentioned this, uh something that we we really value, we know that the Michigan top ten S E P goals five focuses on increasing our efforts to uh move the percentage of all students who graduate from high school and undergirding. That goal uh is guiding principle number one, equitable access for all students, and guiding principle number four. All students are provided every opportunity to experience the broadest range of their life dreams. And M D E does recognize that students living in congregate care institutes uh or settings often realize additional challenges in accessing and fully engaging and opportunities to learn and earn credit uh and successfully complete programs that guide them toward high school, graduation, and post-secondary opportunities. The education of foster care students is a priority to the department, and we work uh and our work efforts is facilitated as a department through the Office of Educational Supports. As indicated on this slide, um the O E S foster care and special populations consultants.
I'm gonna ask you to get a chair so people can hear you by the.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You actually could come also.
The O E S consultants uh in special pops and foster care uh do provide supports through regional and statewide professional development and training. We're providing resources, guidance, and technical assistance as well as legislative and policy advocacy, which includes collaboration with external partners, as has been shared earlier. Annually, our M D E foster care consultant in collaboration with partners from M D H H S and other foster care service providers present targeted professional learning sessions intended to provide both foundational and ongoing support to our local school district, foster care liaisons, and educational administrators. Also regularly scheduled training is provided regionally for designated and identified L E A foster care points of contact. Uh, M D E also maintains a website which includes multiple resources and guidance documents to ensure that our local school foster care uh liaisons have the requisite information and knowledge as well as sample documents to ensure that district level services are identified and put in place to support the specific needs of students in foster care. Also available uh federal program information is included on the website as well as through information provided by our regional support assistants uh to ensure that uh the school district efforts are aligned and that uh those efforts are aligned with federal legislation and expectations for services to foster care students. In addition uh to those previously mentioned efforts, uh O E S staff consultants regularly participate in cross-office, or excuse me, cross-agency initiatives and efforts to identify and address the needs of foster care students. O E S works closely with the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services or M D H H S. We also uh participate in cross-agency meetings to support programming for students with disruptive education, which occur every other month. This Child Welfare Juvenile Justice Interagency Group includes members from M D H H S Foster Care, Guardianship and Adoption Program, the Division of Child Welfare Licensing, and the Juvenile Justice Programs. M D E is represented by the Office of Educational Supports and the Office of Federal Education. O E S staff members uh also serve as a part of the M D H H S Education Work Group alongside student advocacy groups, including uh the Student Advocacy Center, Michigan's Children, uh Michigan Alliance for Families, Fostering Success, and of course, uh our representatives from Park West Foundation. Communication is uh is key in providing equitable and inclusive, engaging conversations to ensure that we understand and can identify needs and challenges and potential solutions for creating educational environments uh that are supportive of our students and foster youth. That knowledge uh and that, we want to make sure that that knowledge is going forth consistently and effectively with our uh education service providers, our teachers, our administrators, to ensure that they're knowledgeable, caring, and that they have resources to help meet the needs of students. Thank you, Dr. Efforts Edwards, I'm sorry. Um, M D E would like to emphasize that in addition to professional development, collaborative efforts, that we do have efforts centered around advocacy. M D E is dedicated and intentional on addressing the supports needed for optimal educational experiences for all students, including those with disrupted education, which includes foster care youth. It's within M D E's influence to live through legislative channels, including direct communication with legislative sponsors, the Executive Office of the of the Governor, and the Department of Health and Human Services, potential changes to statutory language to improve educational outcomes for youth experiencing fa- foster care, which the M D E has done as it has provided input, feedback, and testified in support of the bills that State Representative Stephanie Young shared with us today. We actually, as a department and as a partner, co-led on those very bills. As it relates to next steps, we would like to emphasize and remind us all that over the past year, the department in partnership with M D H H S has had the opportunity to be in space with foster care youth advocacy agencies, including Park West Foundation. This opportunity allowed for collaborative conversations that included the voices of foster care youth sharing their experiences just as they have today. And they've asked for addressing their needs specific, specific to their education. In an effort for next steps, we would like to share today that beginning in January of twenty twenty-four and quarterly thereafter, M D E in partnership with M D H H S will convene the M D E Foster Youth Voice Initiative. The M D E and M D H H S will invite youth with experience in foster care from each region across the state of Michigan to participate in a facilitated discussion. Each discussion will provide M D E and its participating partners with critical information around the K twelve education system to inform additional technical assistance, generate additional guidance documents, not only for our educators, but also for the youth themselves. So they will have at the ready access to the resources and services that they are so deserving of. This collaborative effort will also assist with policy development and best practices to support youth experiencing foster care toward higher educational achievement, including and not limited to graduation. M D E will continue collaboration with M D H H S, Park West, and other partners such as the Center for Performance and Information, who we finally refer to as C E P, and the Michigan Data Hub. That collaboration will focus on how to provide more timely access to real-time student data, including coursework information to support accurate student placement and so that foster care youth, as all other students should, be able to prepare for a viable future. This brings us to the conclusion of our presentation. We would like to say again, thank you to um State Representative Stephanie Young for joining us today. Thank you to the members of Park West Foundation for their work in this space and lifting student voice. And thank you to our partners from the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services for for presenting alongside the Michigan Department of Education today. M D E looks forward to continuing to collaborate on these efforts with our partners in supporting youth experiencing foster care not only today, but beyond and forevermore. Dr. Rice, back to you.
Thank you, Dr. Chapman. Presenters, you did a a terrific job. Board members, to you for questions or comments. Mr. Bullock.
Well, I have a lot. So uh first, I love you, Stephanie. Um, and uh I want to say you guys did a great job, and you have a great champion with Sabah leading the way. She's been kicking legislators' doors open for the last several years. And no matter who's following, they soldiers ride or die to the end. First set is to some of you, I heard whether you're comfortable or not answering is the challenges you had graduating. I I think I heard you're at Wayne State or graduating from Wayne State? Or was that someone else? Okay, so did those that have the challenges of graduating, graduate or get their G E D and are moving on to the next or in secondary? So.
Specific question?
I had, I struggled graduating from high school.
Okay, yeah. So, no, I'm saying, I heard the challenges.
Did we graduate? That's the question?
Something like, did you get your G E D? Did you go to something? Did you C T E?
My high school diploma and I did graduate. Um, I don't know.
Yeah, I graduated and now I'm in um school for marketing and communications at Albein College.
I am still on track to graduating. I'm in A's per secondary school at the moment.
Okay, cool.
Yeah, I graduate as well.
Right, so my question is to the bills, like hearing all of the suggestions from them, M D E, how does the bills like in real time address some of the barriers? So like, he went into a placement, so that means like at some point he became a P A one fifty, right? And so that transition, I how, I heard computer systems, how are we going to implement that with D H H S? So that that tracking is there. They know he's in D H H S. The computer now says he's in D H H S. But the teachers that are in the placements got multiple levels. Like I might have a twelve-year-old, fourteen-year-old, a seventeen-and-a-half-year-old, and they all at different places in there. So I'm teaching multiple age groups at the same time when it's class time. So even if there is disruption of chaos in the in the facility and they shut down school, but when they do go, how do we keep track of that? Because they really need more one-on-one. Like, how's the bills address that kind of stuff?
So what the bills do primarily is we we level set in terms of the expectation of education, particularly in our childcare institutions. Because right now, it's a crapshoot in terms of what type of coursework you're going to get. That's what we just heard from our young people at the table. And so mandating that they get the Michigan merit curriculum. And so mandating that they get the Michigan Merit Curriculum, there's no guesswork in the Michigan Merit Curriculum. It just is what it is. And if you're getting that, then you're on track for earning your graduation requirements, which will allow them to get the diplomas that they want. Senator, you know how this thing works. I mean, so I wanted to be clear that, you know, we're clear about the legislation. But then, once we get the legislation, the legislation allows us to start building. So what that's going to look like, how MDHHS is going to meet those requirements, we're going to work with you all, right, to do that. You guys already, you already have the legislation ahead of time before it gets to the governor's desk. But that's, it has to start there, and then we kick it over into your court.
Absolutely. Yeah, I was going to say, do we have permanent, like certified teachers? Or, you know, most of the placements got like permanent subs.
Yeah, the plan is to build the infrastructure that we have the right people at the table as far as the right folks that know how to teach the curriculum, and also ensure that the IAPs are just not the cookie cutter IAPs we've seen in the past. Make sure it's transitioning to our new CCWIS system as we transition from MySACWIS to CCWIS. And also have some really crucial conversations with our congregant care institutions, right?
Yes.
I can recall, you know, as a CPS worker years ago, that there were really amazing finite programs that were in some of these institutions that if there was a youth who wanted to go to, you know, to woodworking or to be a butcher or whatever, that we can funnel those youth to those particular programs. So now, what is the next step? What is the next transgression in that, in transitioning to that, those kind of programs? Because some of those programs have gone, by the way. You know, so being able to have those really in-depth IAPs that can talk to what the youth's needs are from an educational perspective and how we funnel those youth to the right career path. So it's good wage prevailing jobs, you know, perfect example. I've had, you know, numerous calls from folks like General Motors and, you know, Ford, who want to get some of our youth into hybrid programs to make sure that they have the skill set to service hybrid vehicles in the future. Those are things that in the past have not been accessible for our youth. We want to make sure that they're set up for successful, promising futures. And it starts here with the bill packages and the infrastructure being set.
And then whether court ordered places them in a stranger's home, a relative placement.
Right.
I heard them say multiple times about, and then it's printed there, uninterrupted educations getting placed somewhere or keeping them. So like, I had a disruption when I was growing up. But the one thing that happened, they kept me in the same school. So I went to the same school, no matter whether my home life was disrupted. You know, I lived around the block from the school I grew up in. But then, when I was living with my other relatives, I had to catch a bus to school. But I stayed in the same school. I kept the same friends. I had the same teachers. And so are we trying to address that? When, especially if we got to move them somewhere, how do we get the transportation set up to get them in the same location?
And that goes back to one of the priorities of the department, is to keeping kids safe in their communities. You know, we want to ensure that if and when we can, keep kids connected to their churches, their schools, the areas where they feel most comfortable with, and the communities that are best situated to address the needs of that youth. We're going to do that. And education is a huge piece of that. So making sure we have the transportation and the requisite services in place is definitely our priority.
You know, and once they're there.
I wanted to say something.
If they are moving in and out of those schools and not at the placement, we just had a whole thing about safe spaces. And I say this a lot of times about kids who, where the caseworker or the therapist comes to the class and gets them. Not everybody knows they're seeing a therapist or a caseworker. There has to be another way to get that student out of the class and to that office without students identifying and labeling them.
So it's a lot, there's a lot in your question. But one of the things that we thought would be a life-changing, you know, obviously having the Michigan Merit Curriculum added even in the contract. It's not there. Residential placements, including, like when you read the Michigan State Plan for Every Student Succeeds Act, it's already spelled out that facilities are creating their own system, their own assessment. That doesn't even align with one another. So it's known that things are not happening the way they should. But the plan, the development of the ESOP plan itself should be done together with MDHHS and the youth because there's a lot missing there that does not apply the protections that from mandates that already exist. Like, most parents fall out soon as their children come into foster care. They don't know that they still have educational rights and they're excluded. The parent engagement is completely not happening. So whether it's in the residential placement or in the schools, if we are excluding the rights of parents, Farba is not into play. We have kids who don't even know what their scores are, what their assessments are, as required. They don't know what's going on. So how do you go year after year, not knowing how you're doing? And the required assessments of math, English, and science is not happening. The standardized tests, they're not taking the same assessments as everybody else, who knows what school is. So, and then kids are moving. So it's not a disruption. The design interrupts a lot of times students. It's court ordered, it's court supervised, but a lot of the programs are interrupting them and moving them in the middle of the school year. So a full year of high school, a full year should be guaranteed. The design is not a disruption. That's moving them. It's court ordered.
Yeah, but I wasn't saying it like.
No, 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 I don't mean to.
Yeah.
Yes. But that's what we have to address as well in addition. Yes. So, but the parents' rights, like the surrogate, looking at that, number one. And then looking at these court-supervised kids who have just gotten their new protection as of 2015, it's so brand new to say, hey, let's track their education. Let's support them, but let's put these systems together. There has to be the court notification of who the right holder has to go to both residential placements and the schools so they know who the parents are for these kids. Because Carlos, he was saying, like the person he's paying rent to, until they can contact him to give him permission, he couldn't go to his doctor's appointment, even though he was the rights holder. So the schools are unaware of how to define this non-traditional parent, as well as the residential placement. So this Michigan Merit Curriculum is a gate opener to start, you know, on both sides. But the planning has to happen by, you know, by the youth and MDHHS and MDE together to come up with what this looks like.
Pass on. Hey, guys, I'm an advocate. Y'all can count on me.
We appreciate you on me. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Kelly, Ms. Snyder.
First, I want to say to the young adults at the table, thank you all so much for coming, being so vulnerable, taking leadership over all of this and being a voice for other youth. As a state official, I want to apologize to you where the state has failed, failed you, and all of the things that you've had to experience. That's been a lot. And I hope that you can take comfort in knowing that your voice and the work that you're doing is going to help so many young people not go through the same things that you guys went through. I want to say to Saba, thank you so much for all of the hard work you are doing and have been doing. And for entrusting me with this to help to be a part of making these changes. When I wanted to bring everybody together to the table and bring these collaborations together, you know, I thought, we don't know when these laws can be changed, so let's change some of these policies. You guys came with some excellent recommendations. All of you, all of the work you put into these recommendations. I think it was about 38 bullet points that you guys sent last year. And it sounds like some of those things have been worked on. And I definitely want to thank you, Mr. Starling, for your hard work and the department's hard work in getting some of these recommendations worked out. And giving like, like Board Member Bullock said, we had a presentation on safe spaces earlier today. So creating a safe space for them so that they can be heard and be seen and recognized. And all of the things that they went through where it's not for nothing. I do want to, I want to ask a few questions. Transcripts. How is that going? Is that, because that was one of the issues last year. Where are we with the transcripts? How long, and how long before the rest of the policies, the policy recommendations will be worked out between MDHHS and MDE?
You want to answer that? I will. So in regards to the transcripts, transcripts are readily available through the e-Parchment System. We just have to make sure that the students and the schools are aware of that process in terms of there being greater access to multiple records. That is the next step that I made mention of. We're working with SEPI and the Michigan Data Hub to see if there can be a way where the systems between MDE and MDHS can talk, if you will, and provide that. We don't have a specific timeline, but the foundational discussion of what we want to make available to our foster care youth has been discussed. But we don't have an elongated timeline as to when that will be complete. Discussions will resume shortly after the beginning of the year so we can take a very close look at the technological pieces within a system that would need to be put in place for that to occur.
And thank you for bringing that up as well because that's also something that we've been pushed on by a lot of young people because foster youth are supposed to get into school within five days. But then getting in a school with no records, when you're 17 and 18, you're pushed back to start at ninth grade, you're repeating classes. Christian just talked about how it took over six months to find out he had no transcripts and no records. And there are 100 kids I could bring to you today who are in schools and they will get expelled before they can attain any credit because they are humiliated, they're older, they're with young people. They know they're repeating classes. That's a crisis. And they're unable to learn. They will get in trouble before they can get any credit. So that's a major issue since the beginning of our advocacy. And the effort that Christian put in with his attorney, who was a surrogate, writing a letter from a law firm to schools. So if someone, if residential placements or anyone claims to have a school, it should be uploaded in parchment. Almost everyone since the pandemic is utilizing the parchment. So, including the Title I funds that require parent engagement. If they cannot guarantee the protections that foster youth are entitled, there should be no foster care youth in that school attending classes because they can't guarantee transportation. They can't guarantee all the protections and funding that can come along with that. But currently, like even, like Farba, Chris talked about that. It requires that you look at your grades and see if you want to contest. There is no opportunity for many students because they can't access their transcripts. So, and this is for six months and a year. That is not unusual. That's one of the things that we're doing to try to locate transcripts of different residential placements. Some of them have closed. They are in different places. The department does upload them. So maybe as a faster measure, we're maybe going to lean on DHHS to come up with a way for workers to use the Uninterrupted Scholars Act and upload those transcripts on the computer system or on parchment. So the workers might need to be the ones to upload it for the students until MDE can figure out what to do with that. But it's just not fair. Basically, students do not have access to real school if they can't get their school records, their IEP, their accommodations, and if they are enrolled in school with nothing.
Ms. Dr. Chapman, you said that there would be trainings. Would that be a part of the training? How for them to access or help with parchment? As far as the administrators, the teachers?
Training and professional development that is provided to our LEAs and those within those LEAs that are contracted or assigned to work with foster care youth that could be, yes, included in those trainings. But I will defer to Dr. Edwards if she has anything else to add specific to that. Okay, thank you.
And then the additional policy changes, the recommendations. When, how long do we think it will take before we see additional changes?
Of all of them that have been shared, or is there anything specific?
I don't think all of the recommendations. Have all of the recommendations been met?
No, not at all. There's just a few. But one of the most pertinent one for us in order to be able to benefit from Farba specifically is parents' rights. If there is a way that the schools could actually figure out who the parents are, because any letters that are sent to parents, anything that MDE is supposed to communicate to parents with, it's not happening for foster youth. So for foster youth to have that protection of an adult. So that's like very pertinent to us, as well as the requirement of parent input and ESOP. We find that to be very critical because reading the plan for foster youth is just horribly insufficient. So, and then the input of parents that is required should happen for foster youth. So those changes, including the Michigan Merit Curriculum, including bringing MDHHS MYOI, we already have youth groups, not just Park West, foster youth that are able to speak, because over 60% of foster youth are not graduating at 18. And they are the rights holders, and they could be at the table saying this does not work. Because the plans currently are designed without the involvement of DHHS, to the best of our knowledge. Or the actual parents that are impacted by this, which is again, the biological parents or the birth parents, the guardian, whoever the court has appointed. And it's clear also on page seven of the U.S. Department of Education Guidance of May 2023, these steps that foster youth have non-traditional parents, but that's not a reason to not engage them, to not acknowledge them, and to not involve them because that's what's happening currently.
So, when can we have a plan of when the recommendations can be completed? Or if they can be completed?
As I stated earlier, when the conversations with our advocacy groups reconvene in January, that is part of what we already have discussed as of the end of October, moving into November, that the statewide Youth Voice Initiative, where we are gathering information from youth, will focus on developing guidance. And we hope that that guidance would be able to be available before the upcoming school year. So in terms of a definite plan, we don't have all of that planned out. But we will, in earnest, begin that intentionality of work as of January of 2024 with a likely planned out timeline, hopefully, by early spring with some definite touch points and product points of when we will be able to have updated guidance that would, as I stated earlier, not only be guidance to our LEAs, but also resources and guidance documents that we would hope to be available directly to the foster care youth themselves.
So, for clarity, the recommendations that Park West have made, which is representative of foster youth, you're doing another advocacy group to plan it out?
We're not doing another advocacy group. We are, it's been made mention that there are other advocacy groups already have been a part of the conversation. So this statewide Voice Initiative for Youth would include voices not only of Park West, but of foster care youth from across the state. The recommendations that have been provided by Park West will not be set aside, but will be the foundation of this convening of youth across the state so that we can address those recommendations and look at policy changes and updates and or new guidance that would help move along the resources and support that all foster care youth are in need of.
So there are 38 recommendations that were given last year. So there are thirty-eight recommendations that were given, um, last year. Um. What, July, I think, twenty, twenty twenty-two? So. And, and one of the reasons that I asked to come back to the table in December, a year later, was to go over all of the policies that had been changed, that had been worked on. So it doesn't sound like a lot of that has happened. I know there were a few that were touched on in the presentation, but it was really, you know, the point of this meeting was to have, to go over those policies that had, the work that had been going over, that had been going on over the last twelve months, so that we can see, um, some results. We have students, foster youth, in this state that have been waiting for a very long time to have the assistance and the help that, that they need. And so now we've, it's a year out, and that still has not happened.
So with all due respect, I would not say that there has not been anything addressed. Once the resolution was passed and supported and adopted by this State Board of Education, we did move forward within the Office of Educational Supports and start to look at what can we move forward with changing. Shortly thereafter, there began to be discussions around, um, the Foster Care Bill Package, and we were asked to partner and wo-work with Representative Young's office. And so efforts did shift and change, not moving away from the recommendation, but definitely offering feedback import, input and support of the Foster Care Bill Package elements. We also have continued to work on those recommendations. We have met with our partners in SEPI and the Michigan Data Hub, very specifically on those pieces around, um, trying to make sure that there is a, a technological systematic way that the foster care youth would have access to their records. In terms of the component that you referenced just moments ago, on parents' rights holders, there have been discussions with the advocacy groups, how we would be able to move forward with that. But none of that has been finalized. All of those elements are still under discussion.
So how many of those recommendations were you guys able to, um, work on?
I don't have a set number. I would need to go back to my team, Ms. Tilly, so that we can do a crosswalk of what was asked, what we have talked about that has been done, and what we have talked about of what we would like to do. But no, sitting at the table here today, I don't have the specificity of that.
So that would have been helpful to have today.
I'm sorry, we, I don't have it today.
If I could though, um, because I do think that, um, there's, oh, I think we're, there's some terminology, um, here that's, that's helpful. Um, much of what you've got in legislation is, um, is policy waiting to happen. Um, much of what Mr. Starling represented about being interested in, in incorporating in budget is policy waiting to happen. Um, you, you, you go through a whole legislative process. We went through, um, a pretty extensive legislative process with teacher reciprocity and council reciprocity. There was no disagreement in the state legislature whatsoever. And it took us a year and three quarters to get those two bills across the finish line. Those were policies. Those were legislation i-is, is draft policy. And once passed and signed into law by the governor is in fact, y-you know, effectuated policy, or anyway statute leading toward effectuated policy. And I think the same true too with respect to, with respect to budget. There are certain things that you want in a budget, but you have to make the case for them, and you have to get them incorporated in the budget. I know, for example, we tried to get, um, efforts around teacher shortage incorporated in the budget in two thousand nineteen. Did not, twenty, did not, twenty-one, a little bit, twenty-two, a little bit, twenty-three, five hundred and seventy-five million dollars. I'm just saying, sometimes it takes time to get some of this accomplished.
Some of the policies that need to be changed have nothing to do with the bill. So what percentage is in the bill? You know. I'm not getting concrete answers.
We'd be happy to take a look at this and try to parse this out. Everything is, it, there are many things, for example, with respect to technology, which are easier to conceive of than make happen within a state governmental system. And technology is one of them. We struggle, uh, across the state with technologies. And with systems talking to one another and the like. But Dr. Chapman indicated that she'd be willing to work with her staff, you know, we asked Dr. Edwards and team to really look at those, uh, recommendations granularly, and.
That was the point of the day, though.
Well, I thought this, I thought this presentation was pretty meaty and pretty helpful.
If, if I may say something, we have done a lot of work. However, um, I think the year before, there was a focus specifically on foster youth with meeting with you, you met with young people yourself, Superintendent, you know, Mike Rice, uh, and also Rep. Deputy Superintendent, he also was working directly on the recommendations. But we were working together with MDHHS. And I think this year, we were blended into special population of due to equity that foster youth are going to be addressed the same as everybody else. And we struggled with that, because we were lost, honestly, most of the time. And we were unable to make the progress that we would have really liked, because there are special mandates that we just want to work. We want Farba to work, we want ESOP to work, we want to have access to the same standardized testing as everyone else. We're not asking for anything special whatsoever. We just want the same thing other students are getting. So in terms of having MDE and MDHHS together versus two concurrent committees, and I think that was rejected. For the first time this year, we were meeting on two separate agendas, one with MDE, one with MDHHS. And, uh, it was just challenging for us. And with MDE, we were blended in with special populations when the highly mobile data with SEPI does not even include foster care. When the schools don't even know how to identify fosters, students in foster care, or the parents of students in foster care. So we just wanted that basic identification in order to access the supports. And the support that's, that's already here, that's supposed to be here. So the educational liaisons in the school districts do not know the foster students in the school system. And the kids in the schools do not know the foster care liaisons. So those who benefit from transportation and for some of these things have to come directly referred by DHHS. So there are many students, like they talked about, who are in the schools struggling to try to figure out how to explain who the rights holders are and why they shouldn't just not receive certain considerations. So this is the majority of students. So I think, uh, it's not, it is because of equity, because foster youth are performing at the lowest graduation rate than anyone else, and they are being excluded, they are being discriminated against. There is no family engagement as required. So there's, we just want what's required for foster youth. That's all we've been asking for. So I don't think the delay does make us feel bad. You know, the NBC folks were asking, like, what updates have been happening? They still haven't done it, like, literally, like, the kids who get calls, I know they get calls. They're like, how long is it gonna take, Michigan, to simply give you access to public school education that's uninterrupted with records? You just want access to records. Farba says parents should have that access. But if you don't identify parents, you don't have to provide the, the school records. So we just want those things. And I don't, I think it should be an emergency to get these things in, in order. Like, we're not asking for anything special.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tilly. Do you have any questions?
Yes, the, um, Rep. Young, I know that the bill passed on the House side. Thank you. Um, the Senate side, how long do we think before we see it go to the Senate?
Well, it's, it's there now, um, it's already in committee, Senator Irwin, I do believe. And so we're working with his office right now. Because I want it to be on the agenda on his docket as soon as we get back. So, so we can try to get that done, um, at the beginning in January. And, uh, we'll see. Uh, we, we have the support in the House, so there is no problem with any type of concurrence or anything like that. We just got to get it passed the Senate. I had originally thought, shame on me. I thought it was gonna go to my good friend, Senator Camilleri in education. I was like, wait a minute, but, but it's okay. We, we, we can make it happen. And again, January is what I'm shooting for. Um, yeah, that's it. Because I, in talking to people, there's, there's really nobody who doesn't get it. There, it, it's, it's kind of, it's common sense legislation. And the, the young people here, uh, when we talked, when we had the House vote, I had to share with them, some things don't have anything to do with legislation or how it makes sense, because the first thing, why don't people vote against it? I'm saying, Chris. Some things, unfortunately, we are still in a political space. And there are just some folks that's just not gonna do, just because of politics, not because of good policy. Right? You know what I tell you? That's right. And so, but as you can see, you know, we have great support, and I believe we have that same support on the Senate side.
Thank you. I would, I would like to see the recommendations worked on immediately. This is based in ways. Um, and this, the recommendations they gave, it is not just for one or two people. This is something that affects statewide policies. So you can bring in, you know, five hundred more foster youth to say the same things, that they're the same needs. But these recommendations need to be addressed. And as a board member, I ask them to be addressed multiple times.
Right, and I think what people are saying is in myriad ways, they're being addressed.
Some, some of them have been addressed.
Some of them are being addressed in the work that we're doing with the state legislature, with MDHHS, with foster youth within our department.
But, but things also got off track, like she said. They went into a, a group, a, a separate group outside of the foster youth group that was supposed to be, um, a working meeting, so that recommendations could get worked on, so that these policies can get changed. So, um, I definitely would love to see that done expediently.
Thank you, Ms. Tilly.
Thank you.
Ms. Snyder.
So things took a little turn there, and I'm gonna echo that. Um, when you say it should be viewed as an emergency, very much in agreement with that. In education, when we talk about, um, students that are illiterate and trying to gain access to education, students like yourselves who need this policy changed yesterday, and we keep hearing things like policy can wait? No, it can't wait, because you, you don't have to wait, you shouldn't have to wait. Um. Nothing about us without us is the most powerful version of the constitutional provision of the will of the people. And I want to thank each of you guys for coming here today and sharing your stories. Your testimonies are very powerful, very impactful. I certainly support everything you've come and shared with today. Two questions. You shared something in your story, and I just have a question for a point of clarification. Did I hear you correctly that your parents were paying child support to the state while you were working a job at age thirteen?
Yes.
To provide for the needs that you had to access education?
Yes.
I'm really very sorry that happened to you.
Thank you.
And you said there are programs that these students used to have access to. What happened to them? What did you mean by they fell by the wayside?
Funding for the most part. Um, so there, there's one particular, uh, carter care facility that we, it's one of our more trusted partners and one of our biggest, uh, partners, that they had all those programs in place years ago. But, you know, funding dried up, staffing was a concern, so those programs went by the wayside. Uh, so it's, it's been, um, really something that's paramount for me to have these discussions with these agencies and outside stakeholders, such as Steelcase and Ford and General Motors, to bring forth those programs back for youth. Because, you know, we, we can't depend on old antiquated programs for our kids. You know, every, every young adult doesn't want to be a butcher. Every young adult doesn't want to go into, you know, wood carving. But there are really good wage prevailing jobs that are out there that they may want to buy for. So again, it's incumbent on me and my leadership team to kind of sniff out some of those stakeholders to be a part of some of this process change.
I wonder if there's a way with which, um, CTE, you know, whoever we, we can engage on that level to rebuild more quickly.
That would be great. You know, maybe small business association can be a part of these conversations, and that would be fantastic.
Very good. Thank you, again.
Just, uh, just one question additionally, if I could, if board members are all, are done with their questions. Do you have a question, please?
Just a quick question. So the legislature passed, um, this past session, MCL three eight zero point one two nine three, which is a new law, um, require, requiring the department to, uh, provide a post-graduation opportunities info packet. And in October, um, the department did send out a memo. And I'm just curious to, to know, um, it's, it's memo twenty twenty-three dash one ten, um, reminder of post-graduation opportunities info packet. And so I'm just curious to know if, I think the idea of updating the contracts to include certain language as sort of like a, um, like a carrot. In other words, if you want the contract, you have to show that you're doing these certain things. I'm wondering if, um, something like that kind of language as well, requiring them to provide, um, these, uh, these post-graduation opportunities. I mean, we've, you've already done the memo, um, and it's gone out to school districts. I'm wondering if sort of an added layer of protection to make sure that these, um, residential contracts are also sort of updated to include that you need to know about the Michigan merit curriculum, but you also need to know about these, these postgraduate opportunities? Because that's, um, it's really very, it's really very important in terms of students knowing what scholarship opportunities are out there, and it helps them want to be successful in high school. They actually see a purpose for it, so just a food for thought.
Thank you.
And I wanted to add to that, too. Uh, one of the things that we've asked is to, to kind of come up with a standardized way of, uh, presenting the EDP and an electronic file of that, because the Education Development Plan already requires post-secondary opportunity conversation. It is a Michigan law for all students starting at age, um, eleven or twelve, because it's supposed to start at, in seventh grade. And because we don't have parents talking to the kids about what post-secondary opportunities they should be looking at, that already provides the opportunity to define also who the court has cleared as a team or a family for the kids that the schools norm, don't normally know about. So when we're talking about IEPs and later on with, um, five oh four plan meetings, or when we're talking about, um, MRS, the Michigan Rehabilitation Service, and also the DHHS required transitional planning that starts at fourteen, this, uh, EDP can automatically show you who the family is for this youth that's court-approved supportive adults. And this is starting at eleven. So a lot of other transitional planning starts about fourteen, and they can lean on the Education Development Plan, which is already requiring for talents and post-secondary opportunities to be listed for the, for the children at age eleven. And we desperately need to apply that law. Again, we're asking for existing laws to support foster youth. And that's why we have asked for Education Development Plan to be included as part of the, the children's record. But there is no standard, and we would love to see if, if MDE can look at how, uh, there could be a standard for the education developmental, uh, plan. But that's something we really are asking for as well. That's part of the recommendation.
For the EDP to be incorporated in the CA sixty, in the educational record.
Okay.
Just saying.
Yeah, so we, we definitely wanted to, the regular schools, I'm, I'm not sure of the, the, the code, but yes.
Yeah, we'll, we'll talk a little bit, okay, about the, um, about the capacity of the, um, department to require certain things of local school districts absent a federal or state statute.
I think there is a state statute, I believe.
Well, if there's a state statute, then it, it's enforceable at the local school district level. Well, if there's a state statute, then it's enforceable at the local school district level. If there isn't a state statute, then there needs to be one. And in the absence of a state statute, we don't have the ability to dictate what is in the CA 60. So I agree with you that it would be helpful.
Thank you.
But that's different from whether we have the authority to require it. I would like to ask one question about transportation, because transportation, the conversation around keeping stability is a hugely important one. And I'd like to understand better, if I could, has the Federal McKinney-Vento Act for homeless children and homeless, the transportation of children who are struggling with homelessness been looked at as a model to address greater stability for youth in foster care? Because it's a strong model. It's not a perfect model, but it's stronger than what we have for youth in foster care. So I was wondering if it had been looked at? And I meant it's a broad question, but Mr. Starling, I mean, you raised the issue of stability, and you and Mr. Bullock went back and forth on that issue.
Yeah, so it's profound that you bring up McKinney-Vento, because our RFP, our Request for Proposal that we have, that's going to be, should be posted here shortly, actually mimics McKinney-Vento in a sense. So that's the RFP that's going to be issued for Southeast Michigan as a pilot. And then, you know, as I stated, once we're successful, we'll be able to have the data and analysis to expand that statewide.
So to create a catch area where you have a requirement to send the child back to, to keep the child in his or her educational setting?
Correct.
Irrespective of home at a given moment?
Absolutely, yeah. That's the.
That's the model.
That's the model, yeah.
Very good, thank you. We want to work with you on that, if we can, possible. That's a good model.
That ties back to money, right?
It does tie back to money, but what we know from the work of the state legislature is they funded some really wonderful things in the last year or two, and some things that may not have been as important. So I'm thinking of almost a billion dollars worth of earmarks. So I think some of that could have gone, I'm just saying, I'm just being real. You know, we're 13 days before Christmas, and I think we have a fair bit of funding in the states, a question of what we use it for. And I respectfully think that we ought to fund this as a state, not have to go to philanthropy to fund it. And that's not, Rep. Young, that has nothing to do with you. That's not about you, you understand that?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, all right, very good. Young people and somewhat older people, I appreciate you. If we could do a quick picture, that would be great. And then we have to wrap up with State Board comments, okay? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Starling, you'll stay with us for a picture, right?
Yeah, absolutely, thank you, sir.
Nikki, just talking about you the other day. Oh, because I was at Schultz, I'm on their sack, on their sack. Because I was alumni of Schultz, so I sit on that.
What up, big fella, you all right, you doing?
Yeah, how about yourself?
I'm good, man. I was just laughing and some shit.
Yeah. Yeah, I get that. I remember that.
I mean, she defended her dissertation on Friday, so I think she's been, like, really overwhelmed.
Okay. And. Oh, good for her. Where did she go, do you know?
Central.
Central, okay. Oh, I can't wait to talk to her. Now, I can, so I get that, totally get that. Okay, so I'll reach out to you. I just want to picture. Have you read the American Student Initiative PD offer to the department? Okay, that's one of my recommendations. I took that. I heard about it the first, when I was just holding in Michigan Heights. I had a whole central office, all my principals, but I can see.
Right, but I can't go in person.
I can structure it in a way that would work now because of you're all teaching, and it's, you know, a few days a week. But I think it might be possible to look at, how could we maybe do it and try it as a pilot? And then, secondly, I need to talk to you. It's like, okay. Do you want to help her? So I'd be happy to talk a little bit more about what that might look like. So I'll reach out to you, good, I forgot. I was hoping to get you last month, but I felt I broke my arm, and I was driving people at last month's workshop, so I had to watch the call. All right, good deal.
I'll make sure that I mention it to her.
Yeah, yeah, and I can't wait to congratulate her, that's fantastic.
I think when she, I think when you had set up a time to meet with her, it was the day when I was out of the building, I think I was at a school visit. So I wasn't sure if I said met, and I just mentioned to her. I mentioned to her, like, last week, like, whatever happened with you, you know, Renee Garcia? And she was like, oh, we never connected, and you know, I wasn't there, so I didn't know.
I didn't know. Yeah, I, you know, I'll get out of college, just kind of wait, because I know all these people with teacher guards. Like, I'm sitting in my office by myself, you know? I know I'm not typically having an emergency. So I figure I'll just kind of sit on the way. And I thought I emailed her afterwards, and I'm sorry we missed each other. But again, no big deal, we'll just try again. All right, I'll send her one. Good deal, thank you.
It's like brain break time, I feel like.
Thank you for coming. I would have loved your voice.
Board members, we're at that stage of the meeting where we're talking comments by State Board of Education members. If you have any steam left, we'd be happy to hear your comments.
I have 12 things I'd like to share.
Very good. Dr. Robinson, to you.
I'm done.
Okay, thank you very much for the brevity of your remarks. Any other State Board members?
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays, thank you very much. Anything else for the good of the group, once, twice, thrice? Hearing and seeing, none. Future meetings of the State Board of Education are Tuesday, January 9th, February 13th, March 12th, all at 9:30. All regular meetings of the Board. If there are any topics Board members would like to include in future meeting agendas, please notify Ms. Evans or me that the records show that it is 4:43, and we give you the back the gift of a little bit of time for the rest of your day. Happy holidays, thank you.